Super excited.
That's what I'm leaving for this. I was going to do it this last week. I have the RLC band and it's involved and I was like, just this all and get this started. Thank you Lori.
I think you probably.
Thank you, I'm so excited.
You guys have a great meeting.
Okay, I just want to thank everyone for their patience while we called in the expert to deal with our technological ghosts. It is now 6:15 and I call this city council meeting to order. Roll call please.
Council member Edwards.
Here.
Council member Hill. Council member Leah.
Here.
Council member Best.
Here.
Council member Thomas.
Here.
Council, Mayor Proten Tharp.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here. All right, it is, if you would all join me please for the optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands there. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you. Now we have approval of the agenda. What I'd really like to hear from all of you is how much you approve of this agenda.
That's much to approve the agenda. I'm going to let seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I do not have any housekeeping matters. If there are comments from council or things they want to talk about, I'm going to ask you to punt that down to council reports. All right, public comments about items not on the agenda. I have a list of a couple people up here I'll start with and then we'll take it with anybody who didn't get a chance to sign in. When I call your name, if you'd come up to the podium, tell us your name and where you live and you will have three minutes, which Andrew is going to be timing today. Okay, Craig Goots.
Hi Craig Goots, 495 Alpine Circle. What I'd like to speak briefly on is the mill project we're going to be discussing later today. I've studied all these documents that have been submitted to DRMS, become very familiar with it. And today I checked, there's over 500 objections, letters submitted into DRMS on these projects, there's a lot of concern. It falls into two camps, technical concerns and more community impact concerns and objections about the impact on our community. They cite technical deficiencies and the community concerns kind of fall into the camp of, we have the technical ones that are administrative for DRMS to process and approve. And then we have policy actions that I think the city council can influence. And those policies will make a difference in determining how you respond to DRMS if you do. We cleaned up the site through the Superfund project, so Arkansas runs clean, we have water treatment plants running on the east side. And Arkansas now drives a significant economy of Lake County and in Paxtonville beneficially through rafting, fishing and other activities. During your consideration of responding to DRMS, please consider the project characteristics, it's branded as a cleanup project, but the water runs clean in Arkansas now. CJK has not provided scientific evidence of the amount of contamination emanating from their properties on the east side that they're going to clean up in this process. So we really don't have any statement of fact of impact. And those properties they own are a small portion of the east side if all those properties are contributing. When the mills open, there'll be significant truck traffic impacts in the city and the community. And the cyanide plant in particular is woefully inadequate. CJK should be a signatory to the international cyanide code, which then requires them to be monitored by third parties for their cyanide handling. The 500,000 tons of waste material that's moved from the east side and now stored at the mill site will likely leave one time impacting the groundwater, but not detected for some time, taking decades to clean others that happens. Their plan is to vary much of the mill processing material in their emergency containment pond, thus creating a ground field site in the south portion of their property that would need to be cleaned up for better use. So listen to their pitch tonight. What they say is it fact or opinion? Will there be guarantees made that can be confirmed and enforced? And are they taking the standard of care needed for our community? You are the fiduciaries for the city, they are the extractors of the community. Lastly, what were your intentions in this if this project goes forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goots. Steve Prestad.
All right. All right, the label is on the six. Okay, so. Again, I continue to live in the past and I have to address the past. There is an article in Sunday, March 24th and March 31st that has to do with both Tracy Barnes and Joey Edwards from my perspective, but I think the bigger issue is, and I think I'll explore this in writing at some point, the bigger issue is governmental corruption. Here's an article from the 24th of March and it talks about Guatemala. This is a country that was really built on basic inequalities, said Regina Bates, an assistant professor of political science at the University of Colorado. The problem is not sheer lack of wealth, the problem is the distribution of wealth. Okay, that's a minute. And then there's another quote, "Guam, Guamalos are pushing to reduce governmental corruption, but Bateson, the C U professor, called domestic politics pretty complicated, with elected leaders prone to self-enrichment and involved in organized crime." Now, I think it was last Friday, Tim Best came into the coffeehouse and I pointed out to him that Mr. Labbe was meeting with, I think it's John of North Cross, is that what that is? Yeah, the real yard thing. And they had all these pictures spread out of the proposed motel, I guess. And I said something, is it just, you know, ex parte conflict? And Tim said, well, I don't have a problem with that, it's one on one. But, you know, having a realtor who's proven through his office from things I mentioned that he's utilizing his office for self-enrichment, I think we're wandering into this corruption, governmental corruption. Or actually, we're not wandering into it, we're knee deep in it. I just can't see why we have someone that makes money off of real estate continues to be involved in city politics. And then his sidekick, who's an elected official in the county, is also going to be echoing and supporting such views. So I think the main thing we're starting to wonder out of city government, and I felt this personally for a long time, is simple decency. And that's why I have to say thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Yes, sir.
Are you going to make public comment on the latter leader?
I think for us, that's just a discussion and so I would welcome input at this time.
Well, I think that's probably what we're all here.
Why don't, why don't we, because we'll get to that since our agenda is, you know, like it isn't hours and hours away. So I think your words will stay with us. Yes, please. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. And my name's Jim Colmuss, I live at 1930 County Road 36. And I am a member of the Concerned Citizens for Lake County. I just want to associate myself and all of our CC for LC members to Craig's excellent opening statements. I would just like to really emphasize, what we tried to emphasize last time when we were here, is that the city council make a statement. Because if you don't make a statement, it means you acquiesce. So I think it's really important that you make a statement in your discussion tonight, or agree to make a statement in your discussion tonight. And all the arguments that you've already heard are so, so important to this community. So important to our heritage, so important to our outdoor recreational economy. So please, take a stand, because if you don't, you are taking a stand anyway. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Next. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dan Altonz, my doctorate in health, physical education and liberation. And I just wanted to come up here and just remind you guys that this community is going into a recreation-based economy. And, you know, that's why I chose to come here, the open space and all that stuff. And I just wanted to give the impact that with the amount of trucks we're talking about going through, and I'm not going to talk about the dust and allergies and the pollutants going through and second, you know, the water getting recontaminated or anything, but the amount of noise that's going to be going under the Mineral Bell Trail and people walking on those roads, they walk with their kids, they walk with their dogs. Having that many diesel trucks come down just really is going to be a drawback to the community, I believe. Your community, the reason these houses are so expensive now is because people want to live here, not to mine. With the play on golf course, playing on the ski mountain and the hike and bike here, it's one of the most incredible places on the planet. So I just wanted to remind you guys, it's a real big deal, but think about that many trucks coming through and that much disruption and basically going back into the economy and that sort of thing. But just the actual pleasure of being able to get out and walk your dogs and kids and stuff and those roads are, I mean, I've even seen kids sled down the street. It's about a two mile sled, it could be another, anyway, thank you.
Don't, don't tell us about that.
Yeah, well.
Is there anyone else? Not enough?
Hello, my name is Elaine Kim and I live at 602 East Sixth Street. And I don't have all of the technical information that Craig gave you about the project that's being proposed, but I too am hoping that you will see it from a citizen's point of view and consider all of the ramifications, not just the traffic, the noise. But something that has occurred to me is that it has been billed to me by one of the reps that this was a remediation project. As if, you know, these mine tailings up on the east side were a big problem. And when I asked the question of somebody who could answer it, well, well, if there are mine tailings up there and they've been there for some of them over 100 years and they're pretty well settled, you start digging them out, we're going to have more pollution problems from the disturbing of those tailings. And, and then they're going to bring them, you know, process it and then we're going to have mine tailings right there on the outskirts of town, right there between the airport and highway. Do we want the mine tailings there? We'd rather have them up there in their set condition. So I just wanted to bring those things to light to you and thank you for your kind consideration.
Thank you, Kim. Is there anyone else in chambers, please?
Tracy Luritz in 697th Street, former city council member. I'm also here as part of the group opposing the mine application, the mill application. I can talk about things that other people know way more about than I do, but I do want to encourage you to present a letter to the DRMS opposing this mill application, because it matters what the city thinks about this. Or if DRMS approves the application, then it goes to the county for a CUP. And if they're hearing from their constituents that we don't want this, that's really important. And if the city can also add on to that as our governing body to say, we don't want this in our community. I think that's really important. So I strongly encourage you tonight to do a letter opposing the mill.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chambers? Is there anyone hiding behind the post that I can never see through? Okay. How about online? Is there anyone online who would like to comment? I see one that's labeled Marian got a hand up first.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I have a very small problem comparing to the ones that have been just indicated, but this is a problem related to the snow removal and parking in the historical town of Leadville. The owner has a house in Leadville at 216 East 10th Street. They have bought it at the end of November of 2018, so it's, has been over five years. And the reason why we bought the house, because we like to come and ski and hiking and mushroom mining and sometimes we even like weather in Leadville. So we purchased a house after we have been renting short-term rental houses in Leadville for several years. Our house is also short-term rental right now and we follow all the city rules and paying taxes as it is required. They have also upkept the property, you know, invested into it, painted it, built new deck, tear down the old shed and build a new one. And also spend time on property, on the property upkeep while we are in Leadville. Our property has around 62 feet of frontage for parking. And for our use and for use of our short-term rental guests, guest parking space is required for our current short-term license in the city. And we instruct our guests to not, to use only three parking spaces available in front of your, in front of our yard and do not park anywhere else on the street. Every winter, together with our neighbors, we use local snow removal service to maintain a frontage area free of snow. We have a problem with our neighbor who decided that it is his parking spot because it is clean of snow. This is a guy that owns multiple vehicles, at least five of them, and also has room in front of his property, at least five consecutive lots. But he doesn't remove his snow, doesn't pay for removal, and thus he likes to pay to park in front of our house. The argument that he provides is that this is public property and there is nothing we can do, of course, to prevent him. This is causing problem to us in two different, by two different ways. And first is that when he parks there, snow removal, of course, cannot happen when he has vehicles in the places that we are actually trying to keep open for parking. And the second problem is that when he leaves the vehicles, he had, for example, two vehicles parked in front of our house while we have guests. So the guests have to park somewhere else on the street. So this could really be a problem of the whole street. I have contacted city officials, that means Leadville Police. And I also talked to planning director, Chapi Lo Chance.
Excuse me, you've used up the three minutes of your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was another individual that I saw with their hand raised, Ruth Bolzer, please.
Good evening, my name is Ruth Bolzer and I live at 1930 County Road 36. I just have a couple points I'd like to make regarding the Leadville Mill Propel by CJK. One, there is no guarantee that there will not be a by not accident. There is no guarantee that the new 40-foot tall tailings pile won't leak. They can never guarantee those two things. And again, I would ask you, as I have before, to ask yourself, who benefited from this project? And who bears all the extraordinary risks? And I'm done, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to comment on items not on the agenda? All right, I thank you all very mu, oh, I'm sorry.
Dan, sorry, I just got a text from James Smith, the owner, but Aspen traders here in town, he lives here. And he just wanted me to read this to you, if you wouldn't mind for a second.
And what, what is his name?
James Smith.
I'm going to take this as his comment.
James just would like to say that there's little, and remember, he's a master's in geology. So he's one of my experts in that area. So he says there's little upside and great liability in the I don't know. Well, that's all I can tell you right now, but he's just saying that he'd like to comment one more time and he just doesn't see the upside of letting them do it. So thank you.
Thank you. See my previous comments about technology here? Just like the ghost is in the machine tonight. Okay, um, apologize, let me get back to the agenda. Let's move on to the city administrator's report.
Great. So I wanted to congratulate two other employees who were selected by the Herald in the best of Leadville edition. So Ian Floyd was selected as the best firefighter and Maria Porzelt was selected as the best police officer. So I have extended congratulations to both of them, but wanted to mention that as good news. The other issue or good news is the March issue of the newsletter is out. And as you can see, we've gotten the delivery of the type six, which is a wildland firefighting vehicle. It is fantastic and it should be deployed shortly. It just needs to be outfitted with equipment and a few other things. But as far as the newsletter, Mr. Cummins has been doing a great job of getting it out around town. It's at one of the medical offices, the dentist's office, the library, this at CMC, the county building and the post office amongst several places and received a warm welcome from there, a lot of people said it'd be fantastic to have that information come to them on a regular basis. It also goes out to the city council agenda packet list, so it goes out to that distribution as well. So. Okay, yes, it will only, it will go out on that, to that list on the 8. So that's great news. We are always looking for ideas for the newsletter as well. So if there are things you are hearing from your constituents that they would like information or clarification on, let us know, because that's a good way for us to push out information. As you can see, it's focused a lot on streets, snow removal, being a good neighbor, understanding about, you know, parking and snow removal in Leadville is, it's different in a mountain town. So in other good news, we had the permit technician posting closed on March 27th. We received 10 applications for that position and we will be conducting interviews over the next couple of days. The planner one position closed on April 1. We have six applications for that and we will be scheduling those, Ms. Beal will be scheduling those interviews. We currently have two applications for the street department position. Those two people live locally and also have CDLs, so we're hoping that those folks pan out. You will obviously hear more about that police chief recruiting status tonight. I wanted to give one more update. As you all know, the Tabor Opera House had a small amount of its building, decided to exit the building a couple, let's see, a week ago Saturday. So two good things about this, first of all, no one was hurt, a few bricks fell from the upper corners. The bricks fell onto the sidewalk, the bike lane, no one was injured, which is great news. The other good news about this is it is part of the rehabilitation project for Phase 3. I was glad it wasn't part of some of the rehabilitation we'd already done and also glad that it is something that is in the queue, it's not something that we have to rush. It is part of Phase 3. So the contractor, Andy Carlson, came out last Thursday, as you all saw, there was a boom out there. It has been temporarily secured so that no more bricks fall. We left the barricades up over the weekend, the streets department left the barricades up over the weekend because there were heavy winds, we just wanted to make sure nothing else fell. So nothing else came out. We are, we are confident that at this point, we're, what has, what needs to be secured is secured. So we did remove the barricades. None of, none of the lanes were blocked other than the initial response on the first day on Saturday. So that northbound lane was just impeded, the sidewalk was impeded, the bike lane is impeded. So we're working closely with the Sarah Day and the Tabor Opera House foundation on, you know, what the next steps are. But, you know, accelerating this part of the project is it is important, but it is in the works. So it just, as Sarah does, it reinforces the, you know, the fact that we have older buildings and it is important to do what we can to preserve them. Other updates, let's see. So one council member has mentioned length of meetings in our last meeting and, you know, put a lot of thought into how we can manage our agendas. And we did talk about, about that amongst the staff today. And I'm going to tell you that our meetings aren't going to have less agenda. In fact, what you're going to see is you're going to see more things because we are doing more things within the city. And how we get our business done is that business comes to the council for a vote. And so one of the things our planning director, Mr. Los Thomas, brought up is you're going to see at least one planning and zoning or administrative hearing probably once a month now going forward. So we have some ideas to maybe streamline some of that. You're going to see us using the consent agenda more, so you know what the consent agenda is. Essentially, you look at the agenda and you pass it with one motion. And if you want to talk about something, you need to pull it off the consent agenda, but otherwise, there's no deliberation on the consent agenda. So we're going to try and use that more effectively. And I have some ideas for department reports and some other ideas going forward. But the one thing that I'm going to do, I've had this discussion with our city attorney previously, I am eliminating housekeeping from the agenda. I had concerns about this on the agenda since I got here. I believe that it is an issue to have just a blanket heading and be able to have it be an open forum without particular items being agendized. So I feel the agenda is an indication to the public to know what they're going to talk about so the public knows whether or not to show up in a meeting. So under housekeeping, sometimes we talk about important things that I think the public knew that we were going to be bringing up that they wanted to be present. So I've had heartburn over housekeeping from the outset and given the fact that I can't shorten our meetings with the length of the number of items that are going to come before you, we're going to try eliminating housekeeping to see how that goes. So I also think since a discussion among staff today, we weren't totally sure why housekeeping was ever on the agenda and where it came from. And the fact that I have never been in a jurisdiction that had any, whether it's task force or commission, planning commission or any sub-commission or a city council, I've never seen a city council have anything like that before. We're going to try eliminating it and see if that doesn't get us a little bit of time back. And I will be looking at other ways that we can keep the meetings more efficient. The last thing I wanted to bring up was the sales tax task force. So I wanted to say whoever got selected for that, I, it is, I don't know if there's been discussion about that. I'm happy to help facilitate that, but I hadn't been asked to do that. So the folks who are on it, please just let me know what you, what the expectations are for that or if you are happy on your own doing. So the things you'll have to remember in those meetings will need to be publicly noticed. And they will need to be open to the public. So with that, staff is happy to help you, but we'll need a request for that.
So I believe there's still next steps related to the other three members? And that's where maybe you could give some help?
I had some, I had some unfounded assumption that for some reason you would have chosen those three at city council. But I didn't really communicate that, so that's my bet on that. If city council is okay with that, I don't mind Tim and I being the people who select those individuals. But I want to give city council that opportunity to discuss it furthermore. Or if y'all just trust us, we can go forward with knowing the feedback that you gave us at the initial meeting. I'm not hearing disagreements, so.
I mean, I think it'd be nice, you know, for you guys to work to identify interested parties.
Yeah.
And decide amongst yourselves, like, I think that this makes a good, a good group that can discuss. And then bring that information back to council as a whole.
Yeah, and this is, this will be a good exercise for us to kind of figure, flesh out how we want this particular task force to work. So I just wanted to say, if you want support from staff, just let me know. Last thing I wanted to update on is the IGA between the police department and the sheriff's office. So I have sent, just prior to this meeting, a revised version to the sheriff's office to take a look at. I also have included our city attorney in the negotiations so that she can help the city with the negotiations on this, so that it's not just me. So we will wait and see what the response is. The revised version is based upon the feedback that I got from the from the council during the executive session. So I will give you updates as soon as we have them. And also with that, I don't wanna jinx anything, but in discussion, we are progressing forward with the police officer candidate. And there will be an oral board interview Thursday. So good progress for us on that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm super excited about all these applications for these open positions.
Yeah, I think we're definitely learning that giving people advanced information who might be coming from out of town to definitely look into the real estate market and housing and the climate and the environment and make sure they're committed before we get them further along the process. And so Ms. Beal has been doing that, screening folks. So I'm hoping that we've got it narrowed down, or at least have narrowed down to a good pool of applicants. But we're excited as well. Be nice.
Are there any other questions or comments for city administrator? Thank you so very much. I just have gained so much understanding and insight about the tremendous amount of work that goes into every little thing that Simonson just addressed, plus so many more that are still in the hopper. It's, it's really impressive, both how full our agendas are and the amount of work that goes into making them that way, and the amount of work that follows all of our action items. Let's, I have more to say about that, but I'll save it for later. Okay, let's move on to a presentation by CJK Millian. I think we have Nick Michael online, and I think I saw Gary Nippon, oh, and Melissa Kendrick. Hello and welcome.
Thank you very much. I think Nick is gonna go ahead and take a lead on the presentation. So we appreciate being able to be on the agenda. We know this is an important time because the letter is due. So we appreciate your listening to us and your deliberation. I know you've given it a lot of thought.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, how much time do we have?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay, all right, I will, I will do recording. I'm gonna share my screen if I can. Should be a good... Can you guys see that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with a little bit of perspective before we get into our presentation. So this is a map of the California Gulch Superfund site. And what you can see, this is a fairly current map from EPA. So, you know, we hear a lot of about, you know, Leadville is no longer a mining area. It's time to be more focused on tourism and other things. And, you know, it's your community and you should have the right to do what you want to do with your community. So let's put some things in the perspective of what we're doing here. This area is all of the operable units identified by EPA. Operable unit six, you can see my cursor here. Operable unit six is where the material is that we want to remediate. And operable unit six is one of two or three remaining operable units that have not been deleted from the superfund site. So this area is still a superfund, it's an active superfund. So when you hear that, you know, everything is fine and everything's been reclaimed, well, EPA hasn't released this yet. So it's still an active area and EPA is still looking at it. And, okay, so let's look at some other things here. OU three, operable unit three, used to be a slag pile. This was cleaned up a long time ago and remediated. Now it is a new community that's going in. And may have its problems, but this was cleaned up, it was remediated, and then the community was, Leadville was able to do something with it. You come over here to operable unit three in here, you could see that. That is the old Harrison slag pile. Now, that pile was also remediated about the same time this was. The slag was moved over here. This has all been cleaned up and now this is being considered for the new justice center. So another area has been cleaned up and opened up for Leadville and Lake County to move forward, to do something new with, okay? Operable unit three here is the Arkansas Valley slag site. This site is also owned by CJK and we recently have a permit to remediate this material, both from Lake County and from the state. And hopefully this spring, we're gonna start cleaning this up. And again, once we get done with that, we're gonna get into virgin ground. And at that point, Lake County, this is Lake County, can decide to rezone this or do whatever they want with it. So this is what we're doing. We are in fact remediating these areas. Yes, it is a small part of a big area, but we have to start somewhere. Okay, now, the other thing to keep in mind is this area that we see out here, most of it. And again, it's not this border of the operable units of the superfund. But all of this is zoned for industrial mining. And everything in through here, OU three, OU five, our mill is located approximately right here. All of this area through here is all zoned for industrial and mining purposes. So, so the reason we went forward with this project is the fact that in the county regulations, this is a permissible use of what we're trying to do. The good thing is, is we're not mining, we're not creating new mines, we're cleaning up old ones, okay? So, so after, you know, so that's a little bit of perspective of where we're at. So I wanna do a new share now and just kind of talk about, a little bit about our project and what it is we're trying to do here. And again, I'm gonna speak very quickly. Talked about the problem, there are, these sites are still in the superfund. And in fact, they do impact the environment. As a matter of fact, the Yak Tunnel water treatment facility still operates. It still treats acid drainage that's coming out of these historic areas. So the notion that this is clean, the notion that it's all done now is just simply not the case. It's ongoing and it's gonna be ongoing for a long time. Some people have talked about us being not regulated. We are highly regulated in what we do. We, our main regulatory agency, of course, is the Department of Reclamation and Safety. That's topic today. There's letters going to that for our permit application. The Department of Health, they monitor our surface and groundwater, our stormwater management, requiring us to sample water and to treat it as if necessary to keep everything clean and actually even cleaner than what it is when it comes in. Conditional use permit, of course, is with the Lake County. We're also regulated for human health and safety with, through MSHA. The Corps of Engineers, they monitor surface water and wetlands. And we recently received a letter from the Corps of Engineers called the Jurisdictional Determination, which states that our project is not in a wetland and it doesn't affect waters of the state. So the federal government, through the Army Corps of Engineers, who are the regulatory agency for the government, do not see our site as a concern to the Arkansas River because we are a zero-discharge facility. So we are not subject to the Clean Water Act Regulations, Section four oh four of the Clean Water Act, basically saying that our design is in fact contained, it is zero-discharged, okay? And of course, the C dot for highway use, right? The other way. So again, we have just four steps. This is how we do, we take a waste pile, and this is a picture of one of the waste piles that we are going to clean up, once we hopefully get permitted. We take it down to a waste facility that was constructed in the late nineteen eighties or early nineteen nineties. We will process it, we will put the material, again, in a filter tailings deposit. So this is not a slurry, it is a filtered deposit of wet sand. So it can't, physically can't flow anywhere like a conventional slurry deposit that a lot of the opposition have put in their website showing slurry deposits that fail and go down miles and miles. That's simply not what we're doing. That's simply not the kind of tailings deposit that we have. So we take something that looks like screen number one. We get it down to its natural state and we reforest it or we replant it to its natural vegetation. That's what we do. It's a simple process. We take material from the piles. We grind it up. We mix a certain amount of cyanide that we need for just that day. So all our cyanide is stored in solid form. Again, much safer that way. Protects the environment in that there's not a lot of cyanide that's in a liquid form that can get away with from us. That's mixed in a tank where we recover, where we dissolve the gold and the silver. In this case, that we recover, we remove that, and then we recycle the cyanide. The cyanide that remains in the tailings material is a small amount. It will roughly twenty, so we operate it 100 tons a day, we're gonna have about 100 tons of water a day that we will, that will be tased in the wet sand, which goes into the, into the tailings facility. That cyanide is detoxified. So it's no longer a toxic chemical before it gets put into the tailings dam. And of course, we're, the whole process is managed under a very strict environmental monitoring programs. This here's a cross-section of what the filter tailings deposit will look like. Again, it's roughly the height of the average tree. So, so in the area where we're going to deposit it. So it won't be visible and it will be about forty feet high from grade. So, and this again is a scale drawing of what it's gonna look like. To scale, this is what it's gonna look like when it's completed. All right? Again, we honor noise, we honor dust, we honor seismic activity. As a matter of fact, we've installed a dust monitor. We installed a seismic and also an air quality monitor. Again, we're regulated, we have to keep things as they are or better or we get fined and we get shut down. We do have an outreach program. I'll let Gary talk to this a little bit, a little bit later, but we've had some public meetings. We have reached out, we've given tours, and we continue to give tours to anyone who's interested, including anyone in the audience today. I'm happy to come and walk through, walk you through all of what we're doing, give you a better idea of what it is that we've got. We're talking about hauling. We have a proposed haul route, obviously this is subject to approval. But you can see this is the area we're gonna start mining up on Breeze Hill. You're all familiar with this area. We'll come down around to A over County Road two, down Lynn Road Street, and then on twenty-four and deposit material. Again, everything stays on brownfield areas. Everywhere that we're doing remediation or a facility is a brownfield area. There's no greenfield area. So this is all, these are all historic areas that we're operating in. Again, there's a quick sketch of what our facility will look like once we're done. Again, you see here is the slag area that we're gonna, different project that we're gonna start hopefully this spring. Trucks will come over here, across a new road we're gonna build into the slag area, enter through the back. And in our new revision of our permit modification, you can see we tried to give as much buffer as we can to the neighbors. And this area is effectively sterilized from our operation. We're not gonna do anything in through here to preserve about six hundred and fifty, maybe seven hundred feet of forest between us and our closest neighbor. I don't wanna get into too many details here, but the thing to keep important, that's important is this area here is a lined sump, which means it's below grade. And it is down gradient of this entire operation. So in the very unlikely event of a catastrophic spill, we have primary, secondary, and tertiary containment. This big pond here is tertiary containment. And it is a sump, which means again, it's below grade. And it has a volume of over ten times all the liquid that we have in process in this facility at any given time. So if we have a 100% catastrophic failure, all the liquids will flow into that hole in the ground by gravity. It's, if nothing else, if even the pumps fail, gravity will carry it all the way in there. And it will contain it. And this again is why this is a zero-discharge facility and why it is that the Corps of Engineers doesn't think that we are subject to four oh four regulations, okay? In the unlikely event this happens, the process will stop immediately. All that water, all that slurry will be immediately detoxified. So it's not gonna... So it's not going to be in there for for more than a matter of days, not months or or not years. So again, this is a a. As close as you can get to a foolproof system. It it would be wrong to say that anything is foolproof, let alone our operation. Nothing in life is foolproof. But but this is a pretty solid uh, design that we have here. And uh, we believe that uh, uh, GRMS will feel that way. Um, well, time will tell. Uh, there are some environmental and economic benefits. Gary, do you want to talk to these?
Sure, uh, this is Gary Knippa. Thank you for uh, letting us present this evening. And we would have shown up in person. We were misinformed that we had to show up via Zoom. Um. But um, in terms, you know, we have already used local vendors in terms of. Uh, fabrication and and quite and a lot of the work that we've been doing uh, at the mill. And we will have um. Uh, as the bullet shows, about fifteen well-paying jobs over uh, the ten years of the of the operation. And obviously um, generating tax revenue for the county and and you know, as. When we were permitted for the slag operation, we agreed to contribute a dollar for every ton of slag that we sell. For the engineering of a bypass route for truck traffic. That will keep uh, all of the trucks from going through downtown Leadville. And um, I'm sure that we would negotiate something similar. Um. If if the CUP is approved, so you know, we we are committed to being good citizens of Leadville, good neighbors. And um, just to to continue, one thing I wanted to mention, Nick mentioned showed that the truck route. And. You know, we're looking at approximately twenty trucks a day. And during daylight hours only, and that equates to about one truck every thirty five minutes. And as as the route shows, it's it's well south of downtown and we've done everything we could to 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 stay away from downtown. And you know, the only other point I would like to make is, you know, we have made every effort to be transparent. And we've had two open houses so far and we'll probably have more in the in the coming months. Um, and we are sincere in our offer to provide tours to anybody that would like to take the time to do that. There have been a small number of uh, the concerned citizens for Lake County that have that that have taken our tour uh, some months ago. Um, but you know, we would welcome the opportunity to address every concern that was brought up tonight. And that has been brought up um, in 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 all the various forums. You know, we welcome that. And so um, I I believe Melissa is working uh, on. Um, some kind of a forum where we can bring in experts in the fields and uh, have everyone um. You know, address, you know, pose their their concerns and and have the experts not not, so it's not coming from us. It's it's from uh, the experts. Um, so I think that's all I have. Thank you for uh, letting us present this evening. And um, if we have time, we're we're welcome, we would uh, we would uh. Love to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Knippa and Mr. Michael. I would like to open this up to questions from council. Christian.
Um, about how many jobs are you looking to have um, for this operation?
I think we're estimating fifteen full-time uh, positions full with full benefits and.
Okay. Um, I have a second question.
Please.
Um. You talked about your emergency plans for uh, the mill itself. What about an off chance that a truck driver happens to run over someone or crash into another vehicle? Or has catastrophic catastrophic failure in any other way? Um, do you have a plan for those such incidents? Um, especially in, you know. Hopefully never happens, obviously, but in a chance that, for example, you were to run into a bus full of children. Would you have insurances or anything to cover those types of costs of the truck usage? Clearly, you're going to be using a very commonly used uh, road that is used by buses uh, to pick up and drop off children. So has that been a concern that you all have thought of? Um, and do you have an insurance or some type of way to ensure that there is ways to cover the cost of that for our community?
Well, I I mean, absolutely, we will be fully insured. Um, and you know, speaking to um, the use of. Local contractors, we 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 are not planning to. Own our own trucks, hire our own drivers. We're looking to contract that out to, we've talked to two different local Leadville trucking companies. To do our trucking for us. Um, but to to answer your question, you know, in terms of a catastrophic accident, I mean, that that we the we can't do any more than anybody else. And that's to be fully insured and to ensure that, you know, the 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 drivers are qualified. The company that we contract out is fully qualified and insured and and tests their drivers for 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 drugs. And 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 all of those precautions, you know, we would certainly have those in place.
Right, all the drivers, if I could add, Gary, all the all the drivers are 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 going to have to be MSHA certified as well. So so uh, and MSHA has got very strict regulations about uh, drug use, alcohol use and and uh, and other criteria. So so uh, because even though we're rem remediation, we are, as you all know, we're all regulated by the Department of Mining and 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 Reclamation. So um. Uh, we have to abide by those MSHA regulations. Again, they're very strict about who we hire, how we train them, how we continue to train them. And um, and not just in terms of safety, but in terms of uh, dr uh, driving safely, but also driving quietly. So so there'll be no Jacobson brakes or the trucks are going to be well muffled. The trucks are going to be covered to mitigate dust and all those kinds of things. So all those provisions, all those mitigations are in place as part of our operating plan.
Thank you. Other questions?
I've got a question, Nick or Gary, if you could address the mill's proposed use of water. I know that it's going to require tens of thousands of gallons a day. I can't remember exactly how much. And I know that initially, um, Nick, when you very generously gave us a tour of the facility, you thought that you had something worked out with the Leadville sanitation. Uh, district and appears that may not be the case anymore. So how how do you expect to get the water and will it be trucked there? Are you going to have wells on property?
Yeah, that that's a that's a really good question. So so at the time, and we still have a proposal to uh, sanitation, to use their water line. So uh, they have a water line that that goes from um, um. Stringtown down to their facility has it has capacity, we believe, to to handle our water. So we gave a proposal to sanitation where we would pay them a fee so they would benefit from it. Um, of of fifteen percent, so we'd get, we pay a fifteen percent tariff, if you will. And this is our proposal to them. And also, we would pay for one hundred percent of the maintenance on that line when we're operating on top of the tariff. So again, it would be a benefit to sanitation in the community in that if you know, anything went wrong or any any maintenance needed to be done, we would cover the cost of that on top of the tariff. In addition, uh, on the north side, up on the uphill side of their facility on our property, we would put a thirty five thousand gallon water tank. A little bit more than uh, one day supply. Our our mill supply water requirements about twenty six thousand gallons a day. So call it thirty thousand. So we we'd have a day supply water tank up on top. And what we propose to sanitation is that we would connect a line from that fresh, and this is all freshwater, right? This is all water from Parkville. Um, and if something happened and and they had to go down because so- something broke or they had a a down or any kind of emergency. We we would shut our operation down and provide them with that thirty five thousand gallons of water. To keep their operate, their critical operations going. Um. While they did the repairs, right? And so that gives them some um, uh, some backup that they don't have right now. That is a proposal we gave to sanitation. Uh, they have not um. They have not voted on it. They have not said whether they would do it or not. Their concern is um, that maybe the water line wasn't really a a big enough water line. And uh, we're in the process right now of confirming that it is in fact a four-inch water line. If so, if it isn't for, if it is in fact a four-inch water line. Then we would ask sanitation to vote on it and they would vote yes or no. If they vote yes, then we have a deal and that's what that's what we talked about during our tour. If they vote no, then we don't have a deal. And then what we would do is augment water. Uh, through the 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 water, go to water court and and augment water. Uh, there is uh, in my understanding, there is approximately four hundred acre feet of water available for augmentation in the Arkansas watershed. And what we would do is we'd go through water court. Get that augmentation and and then probably uh, purchase water. From either Colorado Springs or uh, City of Pueblo, I believe, one of those. They have water up in this area, the Twin Lakes area that we could uh, lease from them. They would sell us water as approved through the water court. And and that's, I can't give you any more detail than that because I'm not really sure how the water court works, but we we would have to go through that process. In the meantime, we would truck water, we would truck water in the meantime.
Okay, so we can talk, talk a bit more about trucking the water that would be from Parkville and also through the community?
Yeah, the 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 water would just come down Harrison Street and it would be uh. I'm guessing. Yeah, I don't know. I I don't really know if if that'll be practical, to be honest with you. It 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 it, we we'll probably end up augmenting water. We could, if we could rinse some water through, but but I I don't know if it would even be economic for us to do it, to be honest with you.
I I thought that sanitation had already rejected your proposal, but it's still an active.
Well, if they haven't told me that, they haven't told us that. I was at a meeting with them, uh, the last meeting they had. And and I was, I was uh, um. Uh, that's not what they told me.
Okay, Christian.
Yeah.
But under no scenario would you anticipate uh, putting in wells on your mill property?
That would be the water we augment. We would augment water and we would get it through a well. But but we would augment it. From, it it does, this is the water court thing.
Right.
So what you do is you 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 purchase water upstream. And they augment it downstream. And then there's a delay, there's a month delay or eight month delay or something. So so after we augment, like after we take the last gallon of water, then we would still have to pay for eight months to replenish the water that that that. Feeds those lakes from upstream. It's a process.
Yeah, the whole thing's a process. Uh, so I think I understand, you talked earlier about a catastrophic failure. If your empowerment on the mill property were to fail and you've got a some, do you have a leak detection system associated with that?
We do. That that uh, that sump that you saw in the photograph there is a um, it's it's a double lined facility. So there is a um, geosynthetic clay liner on the bottom. Of of the facility. And then on top of that is a leak detection and capture system. So not only does it detect the leak, but is also captures the leak. So so there's there, and then on top of that is the the black plastic that you saw in the photograph there that you could see. So so what happens is if the if the primary, the primary protection is is the is the is the plastic. If that leaks, it will be detected. It will be caught in between the bottom layer and the up and 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 in the upper layer. And then there's a series of tubes that runs to the northwest corner of that sump, which is the lowest point. So it's not flat on the bottom, the whole uh, it's like a bottom of your sink, right? All drains into a drain and there's a sump underneath that. Pipe that goes down to it. So so if there is a leak, we're able to pump that water out, right? And and um, treat it. So so again, nothing will stay in that sump for for any period of time. It'll be a matter of days if we do get a leak. Again, everything will stop and we would pump that water out. Or if or i- if in the summertime, we could also evaporate it out through evaporators. And 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 so again, it'll only be a matter of days. So the the. It's again, it's it's virtually, it's virtually zero chance that it's even going to get into the groundwater.
Okay, I think my last.
That sump will always be empty is what I'm trying to say. It'll it'll have a just a little bit of water, I have like an acre foot or two of water in it to keep the liner from blowing in the wind. But that sump, that will never be filled with water. And if it does, it means we have a problem and we stop what we're doing and we empty it immediately.
Okay, and I think my last question uh, has to do with the tailing that results from the processing. And I think I read somewhere that um, it it meets the definition of being non-hazardous according to Ripper, the Conservation Recovery Act. And that's based on the waste rock piles from the Penn Mines. So if you were to use waste rock from other sources, would you then have to test that to ensure that it met a Ripper non-hazardous waste standard?
Absolutely, and and it it's, that's a really good question. Uh, and 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 let me uh. What we are permitting for right now is approximately five hundred thousand tons that comes from the Penn area. Okay? If that material's been tested and we did the recraft metals testing on it. And that's the basis of our whole permit application, okay? When. If we're successful, if that material gets my uh, reclaimed, remediated. Then we would go to our next area. Let's say we're going to go to the Ballard or the Winnie Cleveland, one of the other projects up there that we have. That is an entirely new permitting process. So the meeting we're having here today, we would have that meeting again. So if 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 we operate and we process our first half million tons, we get permitted to do so. And we're successful, you know, maybe you will let us do it again. If not, if you don't like how we performed, you'll have another opportunity to to uh, not just you, but the state and everybody else to not permit us. So everything we're talking about today and all the recra and all the all these things we're talking about is specific to the Penn area. If we were to move anywhere else, we would need to re-permit or we would have to not re-permit. We would have to get new permits for that, for those areas. So this permitting process will go on, it will never end. It will, we will be in a continually permitting process and and you you're familiar with that, you know how that goes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, I don't have any further questions.
One last one, um, you had mentioned multiple times about testing. Um, specifically with water tests, but I. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but my understanding is that you are the one required to test this water, correct? Um, during the presentation, you had mentioned that, um, I forgot which organization, but a governmental entity at the state level requires you to test the water. Is that correct?
That that is correct. We are required to do the testing, however, the testing, the the samples are created are 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 sampled independently. And they go to a certified laboratory. So we we collect the samples. We have a, we have an independent person that goes on site and collects the samples. And then the samples are shipped to a laboratory, an independent laboratory, certified laboratory, Eurofins is what it's called. And they they do, they're one of the big ones and they do water testing for everybody. And and so the testing is done by a certified laboratory. And and so the testing is done by a certified laboratory. So so when we say we do it, it mean all that means is we pay for it, but but it's it's done independently.
Other questions?
I might add that the water testing results, uh we provide all those to uh Lake County CPD. And so anyone that's interested in looking at the water testing results that we have. Um they can uh access them through there or you could just contact us and we'd share that information with you as well.
Yes.
I have questions about your dust and air quality monitors. Um where are those located?
We have one air monitor. So so our operation is is small enough that it doesn't require us to test to monitor the air. Okay, but we're doing it anyway at the request of the of Lake County. And we've installed an air monitor. A noise monitor and a seismic monitor. In the uh northwest corner of our property, uh where the where the mill is. Uh very close to the Benson home. And and that information uh when we're up and running in the springtime, we we. We're gonna get it up and running, but the the ground froze on us before we can run the power line there. So. As soon as it thaws out up there, we're gonna get that water or the the power connected and we'll start monitoring. And that information will be made available to uh CPD as well.
So one um. Concern I have about the location of that air quality monitor is it seems like it would generally be upwind. Of the mill and down the predominant winds coming from from the westerly direction. It could be more accurate, probably more accurate to put it. In a more generally downwind area of the mill.
Sure, sure. And and you know what? That that could be a recommendation by uh uh the county when they do the conditional use.
And where, did you say you have a a dust monitor as well?
Yeah, we do.
Where where does that?
That is the air quality monitor that monitors. Yeah.
Um and who? Who monitors those? Would that be in you would monitor that in-house or?
Yeah, yeah. What we do is we 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 have a unit that's calibrated. You know, and again, we have a so we 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 purchased the unit from a company. And the company calibrates the equipment. And it runs um online. Perpetually it samples automatically samples every thirty minutes to one hour, depending on whether we're doing air seismic or noise. And then that that information uh is uh sent online. To to our to our uh it's like on the cloud, right? It comes to our computer. And and again, Lake County CPD also has access to that data. So when we're up and running, uh CPD will be able to um. Uh uh in in real time uh. Log on and 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 see what the air quality monitoring is. So it's uh we we run it, we pay for it, but but again, every so often. Uh the uh company that um. We own the equipment, but they manage it for us, right? They 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 come and calibrate it. Periodically, every six months or eight months or, you know, whatever whatever that maintenance cycle is for them to do that calibration.
And who is CPD?
Uh uh Community Planning Department. On on Harrison Street. So that's Ann and and Schneider and her and her team.
Thanks. Okay.
Um. No, I forgot.
Maybe you'll remember because I've got a few questions um. Mr. Michael, first of all. One of the one of the concerns that that we received in a letter is about the just the odor since cyanide is. Um quite stringent. Um and I'm wondering along those lines. It is first of all, is it safe to say that the mill plans to use a vat leaching? Approach to gold it's gold and silver extraction with cyanide as opposed to a heap leaching? Is that fit? Is that fair?
That that is correct. We we have, we will have four leach tanks. And uh they were uh uh. There'll be about fifteen. Fifteen feet in diameter and about thirty feet high, something like that. There'll be four of them right in front of the uh uh ECS or containment some right right at the top of it.
I I think many at least. Poking around on the Google, a lot of the complaints about cyanide odor when it's in solution like this are from. Where they just spray it in open areas like in a heat leaching approach. Um what? It has it it what is? I guess what is the chance or what would be the? What is the likelihood of having this um? Odor from uh type of of setup that you're proposing?
You know. Any kind of process has odors and smells that go with it. And and this process is no different. Uh in my experience in these facilities, you have to be pretty close. To these uh to these vat leach tanks to actually smell that cyanide. Um I I don't believe that. Even even as close as our neighbors are that they're gonna be able to smell it. They'll be too far away from it. But there will be some for sure. I I'd be remiss if I said there'd be no over there. So there will be some odors.
Thank you. My next question is, you know, you've you've identified that the mine waste dumps on the east side of town are acid producing. Um I presume that's because of sulfur and sulfur compounds in them. When you. Process these. And you take it through the extraction process, we're not really getting rid of the acid producing components when. You may then make a tailings pile. Is that correct?
Uh. We we neutralize that. So so one of the 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 important. Aspects of of leaching, right? Is you cannot have acidic material reacting with cyanide. So what we do prior to introducing any water or any cyanide. In our crushing process in inside our crushing facility. Again, our crushing facility will be inside a building. That has negative pressure through a uh dust collector. So so there'll be no dust and 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 really no noise. You're not gonna hear any noise outside. But at that point, we add a large, large amount of. Uh line. Which will bring the pH of that material to about ten or eleven pH. So so for those of you uh that aren't scientific people. Uh the lower the seven pH is neutral. So like a glass of water would be seven pH. Sometimes it's a little less, sometimes it's a little more. And the higher you get, the more basic you get, and the lower you get, the more acidic you get. So when you guys see those red ponds, like if you're driving up Highway one there and you see that. One little catchment pond that goes to the yak, that material, that red material there is about pH of two or three. So it's very, very acidic, very, very acidic. We get up to a basic number of eleven. And so that eleven will take that maybe four or five and 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 get it. Well, it'll get it up to eleven pH. So at that point, it's no longer acid generating. When we detoxify it. It will um it it'll. Form like these these uh uh. These compound salts, if you will. So so it'll take away. It it won't be acidic because we made it basic. So so any anything that would drain out of it would be very would be neutral, right? And that's why. That's the detoxification process. Earlier, we said, you know, pass the recraft metal test. So what they do with a recraft metal test is is they take this material and they run. They percolate a mild acid through it. So it's not like rainwater that's that's neutral, that's got a seven pH. They'll run it with a lower pH. I don't know what it is, but it'll they'll give it an acidic. And they'll they'll leach through it to see how many metals will leach through it. Because if you have metals that are coming out. In the in the water, that means you're generating acid. Okay, that's what makes it acid generating. So it becomes not. Non acid generating, N A G type of of a uh tailings.
Are are the tailings piles then that basic, you know, of eleven, whereas, you know, bleach is. Close to fourteen. Or or are they? Are you doing something to lower? I mean, a a basic, a strong base is just in many ways damaging as a strong acid.
Right, okay. Just keep in mind that we 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 have eleven that goes in. What comes out is gonna be like seven or eight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um I'm sorry, I just have a whole host of questions, so bear buckle up. Um. You and I have uh talked at at one point, you know, like you have ex- have done extensive. Work and planning for the potential of 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 flood, the potential of a leak. Um and I felt, you know, when I spoke with you last, that one thing was missing was. A plan for containment or evacuation of hazardous material should in the event of a wildfire, which I think is. Not far from any of our minds, particularly in the summer. Has there been any more discussion or development uh on a a plan from CJK Millin to. Um contain and or evacuate things like the cyanide pellets. Um in the case of a wildfire which threatens the area.
Um. The an additional plan? No, we do have a plan. We've not changed the plan. We uh the cyanide, which is the most. Concerning, I guess, I don't know. It it is. It's the most concerning uh reagent that we have. Will be located. Proximate to the. Sump area. Which is. Farthest from anywhere that a forest fire can even reach it. There's essentially no trees in that area where our um. If I can, uh can I share the screen?
I I I guess I'm not thinking of a small burn, but it can like a fire that would threaten Leadville. I mean, none of us are under the impression that just because I live in town with no trees around me that I'm not at risk. Um and that's the kind of fire that I'm thinking of, not the. This will take this'll this'll smolder in the trees on our property and and not touch anything else.
Yeah, we have no plan for that.
Okay. I want to move my questions up away from the mill and toward the uh the site of. Of removal of the of the mine waste. Um. You have or you've talked about a dust or air quality detection like at the mill itself. One of the concerns that's been brought to us is the dust that would come from the the trucks actually. Um. Transporting that mine waste and dust from the from the from the back of the truck, you know, from the mine waste itself. Uh et cetera. And do you have any monitoring uh plans in place um to? Um to alleviate that concern?
So uh what we are doing as we speak. Uh we have um um A AECs, we have a we have environmental consultants. That are working on the A Penn. Or the air permit application. For the mill right now. For for our um. Because that that is a permit with the Department of Health, right? Not with DRMS. So this is another permit we need to get. So so the DRMS doesn't. Regulate this Department of Health and Environment does. So so we're working on that application right now. And and so the way it works is we model. The trucks going down and we model how much dust they would generate. And if if we see that. They exceed the regulatory requirements, then we have to put mitigation measures in there. Our initial plan is to uh cover the trucks. So it'll be so when they fill up, you 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 put a tarp over it. And and it looks like right now that that's gonna be sufficient. To keep the dust down. So um uh so that is monitoring dust that comes off of the trucks. Dust that comes off of the roads is also modeled, which is different dust, right? This is just road dust, right? And so um. Interestingly, if we water that the roads, we're finding that because these roads are used publicly. We're actually reduce the load, the dust load on 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 uh County Road one and two A. From from uh base numbers now because it's not being. Watered down now. So when when cars or whatever people. ATVs drive up and down there, they they generate. That dust, right? Well, when we're operating, we're gonna have to water those roads down with with water or some kind of surfactant. So by doing that, um it'll eliminate. It'll cut down on the dust that we generate, but it'll also cut down on all the dust that the that public traffic. Uh will generate as well. So that's all being modeled right now. So we don't have any numbers, but we should have some here pretty soon from AC.
Thank you. I I um. No promises, but I do believe this is my last question. And I'm glad you brought up the roads. So in that area. The ones that you just mentioned, in particular, one and one A that goes over to County Road two. Are highly used recreational county roads. In fact, in the winter. Um it there is some grooming done so that people can both snow bike and uh cross country ski. Um. So another of the concerns that we've heard and that and that I share is the impact on some highly used recreational roads. Um. Particularly, you know, both in the winter and the summer.
Yep, so uh we we're reached, we've reached out to the snowmobilers and we spoke with them last week. And. Pardon me?
Snowmobilers, but yes, them too.
Association. Melissa, you could tell me their names. Alex and who was the other fellow? Yeah, uh we spoke to them and and um. They uh. Um we're working with them to to reach a solution where we can operate. Jointly up there. So we're. Um working with them to to come up with a solution. And and so we don't have one yet, but um. Hopefully, we can we can come up with something that's workable for 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 both of us. I thought it was a very productive discussion we had with them. Uh they explained to us what their needs are and their needs. For having uh Road two A especially. For for their uh tours that was an es- uh especially a road for them. And we talked about uh maybe uh working something out where we can. They can circumvent that. Maybe we could even give uh some some additional paths, some additional uh trails. Uh. Through our property up there that they can use. So they're very open to the idea. Again, there's no commitments made. There's no promises or anything like that, but uh. They 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 did indicate that they would work with us to see if we can come up with a solution.
Christian, have you remembered your question?
Yes, but I believe Tim does.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I can plug that in while you ask.
Um so in your fact sheet. You. Mentioned that the the waste that you'll be remediating is currently. Negatively affecting the Arkansas headwaters. Do you have evidence that that's true or a study, a study you can cite? That. The current arrangement. With the super fund cleanup in place. Is still that that material is still leaching into the Arkansas headwaters.
Yeah, the only information we have, we have no information that we have generated. The information that we go with is what is published by EPA. And and um from our discussions with EPA. And to be clear, EPA has not said specifically that our. Dumps are. Polluting the water. They it's more of a general comment of all those dumps up there contribute. To. Uh. To acid generation, okay? That's.
The question though is whether that acid generation is affecting the headwaters as it makes its way through all of superfunds, diversions and.
the headwaters as it makes its way through all of superfunds, diversions and, um, settling pools and all of that.
Correct, that, that is correct, that's, that's managed through the Yak Tunnel.
Right, so I'm asking, do you have any evidence that, that acid generation is currently affecting getting all the way down into the Arkansas headwaters?
From our piles, from our dumps?
Yeah.
No, we have no evidence of that.
Okay, so you're, you're framing this as a remediation plan. Based on fact that, that what you're, what you'll be doing is going to improve the situation, right? But you don't have any evidence that the current setup is harmful. So you're, you're trying to frame a gold and silver extraction plan as a remediation plan?
Earlier, I mentioned that O U six is still an active site. And E P A would like to do more up there. Again, I can't speak for E P A, I'm not E P A. But the, the fact that this is still an active site tells all of us that E P A is not ready to release this for whatever reason. And water is one of them, and that is what E P A has cited, and that's what we're, that's what we're, that is our premise.
But it also tells us that E P A might themselves be, as they return to California Gulf like just four or five years ago, to scoop out the cashman ponds and improve the plumbing, that they might still be doing more work to remediate up there.
Yeah, they, they may be doing absolutely.
Thank you.
You have a couple of questions, um, my first one's regarding, uh, environmental impact study. If the nature of this is to benefit the community, uh, clearly not through jobs, but through remediation. Um, have you even, uh, considered or have done an environmental impact study, uh, that is done by a third party that's verifiable?
No, we have not done an environmental impact study. Uh, typically, an environmental impact study is required for areas that haven't been studied before.
Right.
Right, and so, um, the, the, the reason we're even able to do what we're doing is because E P A came and did an environmental study. And through that environmental study, they reached a record of decision, an R O D. The R O D says that, and again, I'm going to paraphrase this, but the R O D says that you can develop, you can do development on the properties up there, up in, up in the California Gulf area. And as a minimum, you have to, if you wanted to do a development on that property, you would have to cap those, those surface, um, the, all those surface dumps would have to be capped. And then you would have to also m- manage the water that comes off of it, so it kind of speaks to what the other gentleman was talking about, you would have to capture the water that runs off of the surface of that, treat it, and then release it downstream if you wanted to develop that. So the E P A is requiring that if you want to do something up there, you've got to treat all the water that comes off of it, which implies that that water that comes off of it needs to be treated, so it's, it's, it's polluted in some way. Our proposal is to take it a step further, instead of capping the material. What we would in fact do is we would remove the material, get it down to the natural topsoil that's been buried for a hundred and twenty years or whatever, and reclaim it, so our remedy, that's the E P A's term, our remedy exceeds the record of decision for developing up there. And once that's open, it's open for everything, it's open for some other kind of development, right? So today, today, that whole area is zoned for industrial and mining purposes. In the future, if it's all cleaned up, what's to stop Lake County from zoning it to do something else? Zoning it for recreation, zoning it for whatever, right now, it can't be zoned for that because of those piles that are up there. As I was saying earlier, it was, we had a big slag, uh, smelter deposit that was zoned for anything, but once it was cleaned up, then it was available to build homes. So once the stuff gets cleaned up, who's, who's to stop it from, you could do anything you want up there, one, once, once the stuff's cleaned up.
And I, I understand that point, but, uh, I mean, even in your own answer, it sounds like you're deviating a bit from what was proposed by the E P A as a possible solution. And I would like to see a little bit more, uh, uh, of an impact study on that, uh, difference in solution, I mean, you're disturbing soil that has been there for, as you stated, sometimes up to a hundred fifty years undisturbed, um, I, I, I I've gone to your presentations before, there hasn't been much mention of um, arsenic soil, or you know, naturally occurring materials in soils such as arsenic. I'm not an industry matter expert, but I've talked to a couple of miners who's been in the industry, industry in New Mexico for over twenty years, and that's some serious long-term effects that they've had from similar projects, um, in purely moving the tailings, so I, I, I understand that, you know, in an ideal world, this would open up that land. But without that in, environmental study, I'm not sure that, that's a fair claim for anyone to make. Um, given the nature of the tailings as they exist right now, especially given that right now they aren't, um, there is no evidence showing that they are leaking into the water systems, um, the Arkansas, um, river, for example, uh, and it's I, I just don't understand fully that if you were to disturb that, if you were to completely shape the landscape and change the landscape, if that's going to continue to exist, um, is the soil underneath it going to still be contaminated, there's going to have to be soil remediation underneath it, still on plan removal. Uh, you know, capping works great for being on top of it, of course, because you're adding a material that is non-toxic. This tailings are on top of soil that most likely are contaminated. So I, I, I'm just not really fully without an environmental study done by a third party fully able to agree with you that this is necessarily remediation as much as it is, um, extraction.
Yeah, have, have, have you, have you looked at the, uh, have you looked at the, uh, work that, uh, E P A did for O U six?
I have not looked this specifically at O U six, no.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any other questions for the representatives of C J K Milling? I want to thank you so much for coming and, and, um, giving us your presentation and, and standing up for our grilling, um, I really appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you very much, and again, apologies, we were under the impression that this could only be through Zoom, otherwise we would have been there in person. And I do apologize for that, I, I prefer, as you well know, I prefer to do all these in person. But we are sincerely open to give you, uh, a group or individual a tour of what we're doing. If, if that, if you, if you will find that helpful, uh, just please reach out to us and we'll set up a time at your convenience, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone need a little break? Let's take a brief break.
Should we hang on or, 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 or can we log off at this point? Would there be any other questions?
For our, uh,
Sorry, I muted it.
Yeah, we're, you're, you're more than welcome to log off unless you're interested in the rest of our agenda. Um, I do see somebody with their hand up. I'm just going to say, we had public comment at the beginning, we will take public comment again at the end of the meeting, um, so hang on for that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we are going to mute again until after the short break.
Let's reconstitute.
Yeah, I got it.
We're gonna get restarted.
Works wonders.
All right, we're gonna take a wild deviation and have a discussion regarding community contributions. Right? We know how to mix it up. Here we go. Do you wanna?
Sure, I can see this up. So, we talked about this a little bit briefly at the end of the, possibly at the end of last year. But I, we wanted to talk about this again because we either need to decide to stay the course with our current system or come up with a new process for community contributions. And so I tried to outline in the staff report what, where we were and we. I remember former Mayor Lobbie telling me that at one point the city made a decision to just make a contribution to the Lake County Community Fund and let the Lake County Community Fund vet different requests for money. Because that seemed to be a system that was set up and, you know, a process. Whereas the city was getting one-off requests and felt as though sometimes it favors the people who ask early or ask often. And it wasn't necessarily an advertised system. And it was, the process was just, you know, the council making a decision. And so, what I remember him telling me is that that was a decision of the council previously to give the money to Lake County Community Fund and have them vet the request. But then what I, what we've had happen in the last two years since I've been here is we give money to the Lake County Community Fund, but then we also have one-off requests coming to the city and we've made big one-off requests. So now it seems like we're doing both. And so I want to make sure, because we had a request for funding, at least two so far this year. And, you know, we're looking at how much money we have in our contingency fund, which is, was, which is where some of these contributions come from. And we're thinking, well, it favors again the people who ask early and the people who ask often. And may not favor the people who don't know to come to ask the city council for money. So, I, you know, I proposed this before coming up with some, I've been in places previously where the council sort of replicated the process that the Lake County Community Fund had. Where the council would create a subcommittee and the city would create criteria, application for, you know, a deadline for applications. Then the subcommittee would vet all the applications and make a recommendation. And then the council would vote on who gets what money. Honestly, it was probably one of the more painful decisions. Because all the, all the, you know, requests are honorable, you know, very good causes, but the money never covers all the requests. So, what the options are, is stay the course and keep giving money to Lake County Community Fund and to one-off requests, which I don't think is the best system. Or change the system and create our own process, which I think is a lot of staff work. And I think that's, come up with a criteria, that would have to be a council initiative. Or the third is to continue giving money to Lake County Community Fund and increase the amount of funding. And then give a carve-out for certain other types of requests. But make it, make it clear that the majority of the requests that are eligible through Lake County Community Fund should, people should put their applications through that process and the city's funding. So if someone came with a one-off request in the middle of the year, we could, we would say, you know, please consider applying on the Lake County Community Fund funds. And so, this is a discussion, I did not put it on the agenda for a decision, but just a discussion to maybe get the conversation going. We don't have any pending requests right now. So, we have some time to talk about this and talk about it more fairly. And do the, the current system of one-off requests isn't entirely. You know, we may run out of money in the contingency fund midway through the year and get a good request. So that's the number.
Well, you mentioned carve-outs. So, for instance, what were the carve-outs?
Well, you saw in the staff report that I mentioned the carve-outs being the Main Street programs and Tabor. I would say, you know, as far as. I think we'd have to double-check with the Lake County Community Fund to ensure that there wouldn't be a good cause that would not get funded. Mayor, you mentioned a couple of thoughts you had this afternoon.
I mean, so they, they have one grant cycle a year. You gotta be ready for it. It's, you know, I think it just happened, actually, or maybe it's not supposed to be done. So I feel like, you know, they're, they principally focus on local nonprofits. So I question if things like, you know, certain TUPs that come before us, you know, that have a particular need to put on an event that, you know, benefits us would fall under that purview of Lake County Community Fund? Or like the high school play production, they're typically come before us and ask us for a certain amount of money. You know, like, do, would they fall under the, the, the grant process for Lake County Community Fund or not? I mean, those are kind of the two areas that I, that I wonder about, or not so much our larger nonprofits that definitely go through that. But the people who come through the TUP process and then like these smaller, like, kind of student-run, you know, like we. I know that the Environmental Club was gonna come and ask us for some money last year, and then they found a different funding source, you know. So that kind of stuff. Like, I don't wanna discourage that level of engagement. I do think that we, I would like to encourage, you know, that things like, you know, Broken Arrows, like to go through the community fund, to stop there first, you know, apply for them first. And I like the idea of increasing our, our contribution to that. That's part of my thought. My other thought is that are all those funds for us come out of operating contingency? Which is not only for fulfilling requests from the community. We use it, we use it for, for staff meals, we're gonna use it for state of the community expenditures, that sort of thing. So we use it for a lot of internal things as well. And so I don't want that to run out. It's like, we, we need that to some extent. That's my two cents.
I have that, as always. I, you know, speaking from someone who's worked in the nonprofit industry basically my whole adult life. I, I think one of the things that makes it so enticing for some of these nonprofits to come to us rather than the community fund is twofold. One, it shows a stronger partnership between the city and the organizations, which is immensely helpful for any grant funding especially. I know in-grant applications, having a strong ties to governmental entities is very enticing. And having direct funding from governmental entities is something that funders tend to look at. While we divert funds to the community fund, while in essence we're doing the same thing. On paper, it's a bit different as to what people claim it to be. You can say, well, we got community funds funds, or community funds funding that was funded by city council, but at the end it came from a community fund, not city council. So it displays a little bit less of a relationship building with those. Additionally, I think having it, and I know I'm saying this under the circumstances that I'm in, but having it long-term be ran through subcommittee and through council gives council the opportunity to kind of understand what the current dynamic and need is from the outer community that adds an interesting perspective, while of course being much more expensive for us to run. It adds an additional perspective to council to where we can see like a lot of more of these requests coming in. As opposed to the community fund who, you know, may use that information or not. But I just think there's a value behind having council members especially involved in those processes and understanding those processes. Maybe a council member has like lived experience in one of those. And the community fund may have not granted it before, but if council were to have had that presentation in the subcommittee format, a certain council member would be like, this is great because I know exactly how this, this, and this operates. And I think that opens the door for us to be more involved as a community. I know we already have a lot, and we do a lot, but I think this opens the door to be more involved. Which obviously is a double-edged sword with our time. But I think that's ultimately a good thing and what we should be striving for as a council.
Oh, and I think that's pretty compelling. I guess the other thing that crosses my mind is that, you know, like when we had those big asks last year from some of the larger local nonprofits, it's because like they were in crisis. Like they had unexpected shortfalls, you know, so it wasn't something they could plan and be like, oh, you know, to meet our budget, you know, we'll, we'll go through the community fund. Like, they found themselves in a pickle and the city was part of the solution. Not the whole solution, but part of the solution there. But I do really take, you know, Lori's point about having this sort of hit and miss, you know, like people just dropping in and making requests and then all of a sudden, especially now, this year, we have less operating contingency than we have had in the last couple of years. So, you know, does that mean like we just, we feel generous and we fund things? And then in October and it's like, hey, everybody else is, is lost. Like, should we, should we, in order to preserve that connection with community? And I really feel the grant implications of having the government buy-in. Should we divide it up and say, oh, you know, like we're only gonna do, you know, requests for funding like quarterly or semi-annually or, or something like that? And try to, you know, limit and just say, we're gonna use half of the, you know, like we won't go over half of the operating contingency like for the first half of the year? And just sort of maintain, have some sort of control of.
I've, I've got a couple of thoughts. One, one I'm very uncomfortable with, the first come, first served kind of approach that we've fallen into. It just doesn't feel right to me. And I'm intrigued by the idea of picking our lump sum and giving it to Lake County Community Fund because it sounds so simple. Job done, here's your check. Let us know how that all works out. So I wonder if there's a way to meet in the middle and develop a stronger relationship between the city and the Lake County Community Fund. For example, I think we could provide some guidance to Lake County Community Fund on how we might like to see city funding spent. Not to identify individual organizations, but just to share our goals. And maybe the Lake County Community Fund comes to talk to us three times a year, four times a year. So that the city is current with what the needs of the community are true to nonprofit community. I, I think there's some opportunity there short of coming up with a city staff, city council process to consider every grant application, which could be very burdensome.
Just to clarify, it sounds like city staff does not have the bandwidth to deal with that on an ongoing basis, correct? Without something changing, there's no way to handle that level of traffic. Is that what I'm hearing?
We can handle, you, you know, I think Mayor's idea is, is probably the good one. We could handle it. We said we're gonna consider requests on these agendas, then. But it, so I think we could do that. We don't have the bandwidth to help draft criteria, set an application deadline. You'd have to probably have open meetings and agendas then and post them and take notes. So we don't have the capacity to create a system for vetting applications, you know, similar to what Lake County Community Fund has. But we could continue to present a one-off as they come. And it might be a good idea if you wanted to do it, do it, you know, maybe quarterly or something like that. And commit to not spending more than a certain amount at certain points of the year.
Semi-annual process sounds more reasonable. And I absolutely agree with Rebecca. I still think that the majority of that could be handled by the community fund in a, in a positive way.
Yeah. I definitely do not want to recreate a system like the community fund.
Well, that's, and that's all they do. It's a full-time annual job.
Yeah, I, I should reveal that I do have an informal request before the city, before Mayor Green, for the advocates. I like Councilmember Thomas's idea that, I, I mean, I view the community fund and I've been in several nonprofits in town as sort of a filter. And please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, all the nonprofits apply to the community fund every round and they all get about the same amount every year. And that seems pretty fair, right? Except that some problems that need to be solved cost a lot more money than others, like housing. So, I like that sort of little round idea that we sort of somehow express a preference or an emphasis on how we feel city dollars should be disseminated rather than everybody getting their, you know, $10,000 grant every year. Because I think, you know, one, one function the city could build is when there, if there is money to be thrown at a, a meteor problem, let's say, that we have the flexibility to do that.
Have we asked the community fund if they'd be willing to run the process for us? Example, right now they basically give out the funds. If they filter the initial portion, so they keep doing what they're doing, and then just present them as finalists or something to us as council to be able to review. So that that, there isn't a loss in the sense of partnership for the nonprofits that might be gearing for more funding. And it might just be enticing, more enticing to have that governmental nonprofit agency connection, direct connection.
Then they might have to run two different programs.
Would it?
Don't you think?
I, maybe. I mean, it could certainly still be part of the same program. And maybe it's just opening up, they'd have to modify it, I'd imagine, to open up the gate a little bit more to different types of requests. And then maybe those three requests that qualify for funding from the city.
Are you suggesting that there be a council member presence on their grant review board?
I don't know if that's the right way to do it, or if it's, hey, your request is great. You've identified that it would be helpful to, from these funds to come from the council rather than the community fund for X, Y, or Z reason. Why don't we facilitate that process and kind of present your guys' application? So that way they're still doing the groundwork of what they've been doing. But they're just identifying different agencies that might just better benefit from having funding directed from the city rather than for the county, or that just aren't eligible for their program for one reason or another that they still think are valid candidates.
I think I understand what you're saying. So let's say the city's gonna give $100,000 and we share that with the Lake County Community Fund. They do all the vetting. And they come to us at one meeting Sunday in May and say, okay, we vetted all these organizations. We recommend that this is how the city spend their funds.
Yeah.
And then we review it.
Yeah. I mean, that makes sense to me, yeah.
I really don't see how that's gonna arrive at different results than what they already do with their money, which is every nonprofit gets about the same amount. Some exceptions. And then, you know, they have another function, which is they end up landing huge grants for particular parties. You know, that's, that's another thing that they do. But in terms of their annual grant cycle, I, I don't see how that would really change.
Correct. So they would still be only doing one, one grant a year.
But it would get some.
No, that makes sense. Uh, that sucks.
Well, we could certainly, you know, sometimes I see what we're struggling with trying to find the perfect solution. I think sometimes try a solution and see if it works. So we could just modify the process that we're currently following, which is we give money to the Lake County Community Fund, but we consider semi-annually, quarterly. We can put it on the agendas that if someone comes to us, we would bump them. So when people come, I'll say, this is the next consideration of contingency funds.
Wouldn't it partly solve the problem of fairness related to first come, first served? If we do a call-out and that's opening another pen of worms. Let everybody down.
I like the bump down, the bump down to the next agenda if it's not time.
Well, I don't know that, I, I, in that case, I think we are gonna disappoint people. Because I don't think we have much money in the contingency fund this year. I think we have.
We have 20 extra, now we have 14 extra. In, in addition, outside of the commitments we've already made out of operating contingency.
So we have $14,000 left for theirs.
It's not much money. It's not much money. And like I said, I'm taking, I'm gonna take some of that out for state of the community.
So if we didn't call out, we only have $10,000 left for the year, like you two make a million bucks.
Yeah. I don't, I, I don't like the idea of a call-out, but I do. But I do like the idea of saying, you know, like, let's say, like, July. We have people who come and, and, you know, if, if anybody between now and July comes and wants a request, we say, come in July, that's when we're gonna do our, our review. And we say, all right, let's look and see how much we have in operating contingency by then. And let's say we're not gonna spend any more than, I don't know, half of what's left, you know? And then do it again in November. Not with the goal of completely emptying the operating contingency, but just if somebody comes in September and wants money, like, can you come back in November? When we're gonna consider any of the people who wanna come during that time? Because I, I don't wanna put out a, you know, a broadcast. Yeah, everybody would, hell, now we can.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's a good short-term solution.
One, one other option idea, does it make sense for us to set up a work session or a meeting with Lake County Community Fund and see what ideas they might have on some of these proposals we've bounced around and see what they can do for us?
I think, I think it would be, I, I think it would be helpful from our standpoint to better understand their process. I accidentally attended one of their, their, their grant review meetings. Long story, you know, but it was, you know, it was educational and I was like, I have no idea that I did it this way. So it might be nice maybe to, like, invite John McMurtry just to, like, give a short presentation and a Q and A so we can better understand their process. And maybe, maybe spin the idea of, you know, like, what if we, you know, like what if we as a city said, hey, we'd like the $9,000 that we give you, you know, to have this focus, you know, next year? Because that's kind of our, you know, this is the biggest issue that's been happening, for example.
It would be inviting to have them speak.
Yeah, so usually we have them come as part of the budget process, but we have new council members since that time. So I would say the April 16th council meeting is filling up quite quickly. So we would probably look at it sometime in May.
That's kind of perfect. If we're thinking about future requests, asking them to get on the July agenda.
So what we can do is have that be a presentation and discussion, and then you can hear that. And then that still gives us time to make a final decision if you want to change your guidance of making it July, you know, July's and, I mean, asks in July and November.
And I hope that takes some, at least provides some clarity to you guys for, for bumping people down and not trying to integrate them into our, our current, whenever they arrive.
Being a new council member, would the, would having an ask it ever be a conflict with the budget?
Good question. We still have to have regular meetings, right? And that's when I would, and that would be, that would be dealing with the operating contingency that we have set aside for this year. I, I don't think it would conflict with our plans for, for next year. I'm super interested to see how that turns out.
Okay. So I have right now just tentatively on the agendas in July and November. Okay. So I have right now just attendance to Lee on the agendas in July and November. You know, just a placeholder for contingency fund asks, and then I will check with Mr. McMurtry. And see his availability for the uh May seventh meeting.
Actually, I think that's great, cause state of the community is April thirtieth, and he's integral in getting that together. So I'm sure his plate is quite full before.
I do think we can do a better job of planning for some of the regular things that come before us. For example, if ski jarring is something we just wanna plan for every year. Because it's an event that activates Main Street and activates our town. Um I feel like that's something that could be dealt with in the budgeting process. Or something that could maybe be routed through the Main Street program or something like that. Um it seems like a lot of these things that feel like one-offs are actually pretty foreseeable events. That we could could budget in.
Like the high school play.
The high school play. Um and in general, I do like the the ideas I heard proposed. Um but maybe there is room also for just planning on some of those um. Kind of downtown revitalization things.
Well, and right now, so our operating contingency already has that. Like this includes, you know, this amount of money for the opera house, you know, this amount of money for, at one point, it was for economic development. Plus this amount, and so we could do that, just plan ahead.
Yeah.
And talk to Duffy and talk to the high school, for example, and just say, are you thinking? Because we wanna budget this and not make it a surprise with the little remaining amount that we have.
And and so one thing that's hopefully really helped us in our budgeting process is we are looking into new budgeting software. That will not just be lumps some with where you have to scroll through all the comments to find out what the money. In that line is for, so uh we, I've been working with our finance director. We're gonna have some uh ClearGov is the software. And uh we feel is familiar with that at the county, and so we're gonna try and roll some of that out for this next budget season.
I would like to be involved in some, just to get a preview.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine to do an Excel spreadsheet, but I think we've gotten maybe beyond the capabilities of an Excel spreadsheet. For purposes of our budgeting.
Okay. Any other, any other contributions to our discussion on community contributions? Alright, well, that wasn't. Let's move on to the action items. Discussion possible action regarding a letter to the. DRMS regarding the pending CJK million permit.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think I should recuse myself in this discussion.
No, did you?
As a member of any zoning, I can't do that.
It's for the county.
For the county, right.
Because that, remember that question I asked today of like, if we submit an opinion, are we shooting ourselves in the foot? If we have a down-the-road quasi-judicial process regarding CJK million. By entering a letter of opinion where we would be declaring ourselves having predetermined part of this. And that would be wrong, but we don't have down-the-road quasi-judicial issues. And I appreciate his attention to that, um that finer point. It woke me up in the middle of the night and I was like. Alright, so. Um the things that are included here are are the letter from Man Anderson. Um I think a lot of her questions we have touched on. And my question regarding the bitter almond smell of cyanide was taken out of her. Um concern. And then there was another letter in here from Anya Timmerman. Well, I'm gonna launch into talking unless somebody wants to talk about, and Rebecca was kind enough to um. Put together a letter that is far more eloquent than I would have been able to produce.
It's good.
It, I. What are people's thoughts on on this?
I wish it was a little stronger, but I think it's good. It's hard to find, it's on page twenty seven.
Twenty seven?
It's in between the two, the letter from Man and the letter from Anya.
Oh, so it's in, okay, I see, so it's, no, I don't see.
I don't have pages.
Okay, okay, nevermind, thanks.
Well, I think it's essential that we submit comment in some way to ensure our seat at the table is a concerned party. I'm okay with the letter as written. And.
And maybe.
Yeah.
I'm gonna actually direct my question to Rebecca, cause I feel like this is a letter that is directed to DRMS. And DRMS is a regulatory in- institution. That has processes by which they consider applications for permits. Um I, in a way, and maybe correct me if this is is wrong. But I would view that as something similar to our, like, like our variance applications. Where like we have these criteria that we have to go by, and what we can't do is consider emotional appeals. Um like this person is a great person, you should totally give them this variance, you know, or, you know, I've poured my life into, you know, like that kind of stuff. That means a lot to people, but that is not relevant to the process. And part of my concern is that. Some of, not all of this letter, but you know, it's like some of this letter puts forth that. Um like the stuff that DRMS, I don't think actually cares about. Like the place for some of these concerns would be the county COA process. And so part of me would like it to focus on things that have to do with that. Regulatory focus. So um and I think um. I think, yeah, I think it was Mr. Gooch who put it very well. It was like, you know, like, like, like to look at the, at the, at the technical issues. Involved. Um so, for instance, um. And I'm gonna ve- I'm gonna like deviate from a lot of people's opinions and say like, my principal concern is not the cyanide. Like, I I think that is a highly regulated process, and I think that the process, the procedure proposed. Isn't, you know, i- isn't what is, has been presented and isn't what is highly concerning. I know I will deviate from people like that. I have my concerns, but that's not my hugest one. Um I feel like. The intent to reprocess waste rock from the historic mining district, which inherently poses risk to water quality. Like, if that is a concern, I just, I don't know. Does DRMS deal with that, or are they gonna look at the? Look at the Army Corps of Engineers who said, we don't have any concerns about this, and be like, here's this emotional appeal. We're not gonna listen to the rest of the letter.
I I hear what you're saying, and I think DRMS, through their permit application process. Will look to make sure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And unless we come up with something in the regulation that it appears that the mill has not addressed in their application. DRMS won't have anything to take action on. That said, I I agree with um you and your concern that we absolutely have to submit some sort of letter. Just to keep our seat at the table.
Yeah.
And I think when the county begins to consider their um use permit. It's gonna be about community impacts less than technical aspects. Exception of the source of water. And that was, that had moved for me tonight from um Nick and Gary's presentation. I I thought that the sanitation district had denied them using their piping. Doesn't seem like maybe that's true.
I don't think they formally denied it. I think they are.
It's on the edge.
They are. I just think they're so strong, I need to say.
I think that it seems like there's still an open option for trucking water from Parkville despite what was said today. And I think that would have a huge community impact and maybe also a technical impact. And I think that if they look for additional water rights through the state. And attempt to pump that much water from their property, and they have an impact on surrounding drinking water wells for the residents. And those are the kinds of things that DRMS may be able to attach to.
Yes. So can, I mean, I also, like, I can totally get, it is our responsibility to bring the concerns of the community. Forward, and I fully support that. I I just wanna make sure that we're bringing the concerns to the right parties, right?
I I don't understand the full process of, you know, that's obviously, or the whole process of the state. But I think, I don't, I agree with you that we should lead strong, so maybe water is the way we lead. Um as that is the most technical concern. Um but I don't think it's necessarily inherently inappropriate to include the rest of the concerns that we have shared. Um just as a general stance that we have. If they choose not to take that, that's great. I mean, it's not gonna hurt us to not have that.
I agree.
If I'm hearing you correctly, our letter is not gonna impact the decision.
Well, if we, so I I feel like if we lead with a technical concern, something that catches, like, that maybe this interrupts one of those. Somebody pauses before they cross a T or dot and I, and be like, okay, we have here, like, you know, like, if we say. Hey, we think they don't have a, you know. You know, a clear, they don't have a wildfire plan, and I, that is also, personally, I think that should be a technical concern. Okay, but. But I think like if we lead with something that catches the DRMS's eye, because it's somewhere in their technical. This could be one of the checkboxes and say that they don't have, or they have not demonstrated. Uh or or that this this mill would require, you know, like this much water use or tremendous amount of water use. And they have not, uh they have not been able to uh demonstrate a firm plan for where that water would come from. In fact, they came forth and said, if Plan A doesn't work, we're gonna trans- try to transport water through town. Which, as I think as you pointed out, would be a lot more than a truck every thirty-five minutes. It might not even be economically physical. And then, you know, their Plan C is to look for uh permission to drill. On, you know, on their own property. And and that alone, like, I personally, I think that destabilizes. That la- you know, that lack of certainty destabilizes some of their other. Their other processes that seem to pass muster on a regulatory level. Um because the water is necessary, and it's it's necessary for the cyanide solution, it's necessary for the disoxidification. Um so I, I I think we should lead with that. I don't mind the, you know, the other points in here, but I, you know, my concern is that if we lead with, you know, something like. Hey, we're worried about cyanide leach process, and they're like, hey, we already told them, if they do it like they say they do it, it's fine with us. Like, it's gonna alienate the people reading the letter.
Yeah, I think that's really smart.
I I do feel like we shouldn't claim expertise where we don't have expertise. Like, I do not know how to assess a cyanide leach process.
Yeah.
But maybe impact traffic in town, that's something we do have more expertise in.
And I don't think it's necessarily, like, I guess from my perspective, not with the cyanide, I actually kind of agree with Dana. I'm not too worried about that necessarily, at least not from a technical uh standpoint. Um I I think. It is there, up to their due diligence to provide the information to us to feel okay with the processes that are going on. And I think it's fair to say they have not provided their due diligence um to be able to provide a good perspective for us. For certain aspects of their project. Cyanide, you might not be able to say. Um but, I mean, certainly I didn't feel comfortable with uh their answers to the questions about transportation. And other such things with, no, just water, but contamination from um the soil. Uh or not, sorry, the soil, the tailings moving and all that. There's a lot of those, like, areas that I, they did not provide enough. Information to us. Now, while a lot of that won't be considered by um uh the organization that's reviewing this. I still think it's important to highlight that. Um and certainly some of those are going to be reviewed, like the water specifically. So I think, think about it from that aspect, it makes sense, even if we're not technical experts.
And I also, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was, I I and I'm forgetting who commented on this. But the idea of taking like a mine west pile here and producing a tailings pile here. I don't know, I mean, that, that, that really, um that. Yeah, who who benefits?
I was just gonna say, I also object to their characterization of this sport as remediation. I don't think that will necessarily have an impact on DRMS's review of their permit application. But I think that could be included in this letter.
So that that brings up my question, is it, so if really with this letter, we're, we're, it's a position in the paper in a way, right? Is it an option to make it public?
The letter? Yeah.
Yeah, it it automatically is public.
As a, as a statement of a position.
I think so, and I, I like that perspective of this is our stance on this right now. We might revisit it if things change, but currently this is where we are standing. Uh not only is that important for DRMS, that's gonna be important for our community members too.
I do with that, I want to be cognizant of, you know, the fact that, and Rebecca and I have talked about this. That it's quite likely that DRMS will approve their permit if things are the way that they said that. You know, and then our next step would be, you know, putting both our input in as a, as a city to the. To the, as a, as a county um referral agency. But also attending like the COA process and putting in the concerns that really are more central to the community there. Um I want to hold open, again, the, you know, the possibility that, you know. I mean, this is a bona fide economic thing, like, it's. No, but I mean, uh but I mean, like, there's, there's compelling economics for them, right? You know, like, they own this land, they want to. They bought it with this intention, you know, I think, you know, from a business standpoint. You know, I I appreciate that and I understand that. And if regardless of anybody's position, this ends up back in our plates where we're negotiating with them and saying. Hey, you know, we'd like the load tax, and what else can we do to protect the community and to preserve the recreators experience? That sort of thing, like, I, I want to make our position clear. But I also don't wanna just go wild and burn bridges so that they will not want to work with us. That doesn't mean that I'm not saying we shouldn't submit a letter of opposition, but I I just don't, like, I don't wanna go. Wildfire.
So if we want those changes and the letters due tomorrow night. Do we just vote on it with?
For content?
Yeah, with a mission for you to to.
To lead with, and here's the other part of the letter, is that I I would like it to come from council.
Yes.
Like, I don't mind being the headline on it, but I I don't want it to be just from me, you know, I want it to be from council.
And I think that would be.
Which I'm a signatory.
Yeah, like, I would want to ask, is that something we can do, or can we just sit here and draft one right now?
No, they wouldn't draft it. This would be, this is our job.
No, no, I'm asking, I would like. No. Okay, there.
I think I understand Councilmember Lillian's question. You could indicate what changes you want to make to the letter tonight. Or you could give guidance as long as the guidance is clear enough, whoever is going to be making those changes understands the changes that the council is requesting.
I'll have to do two to write a little bit of letter based on what we discussed.
I do too.
I do too.
What are the for you guys? Okay, Christian.
Uh huh.
Critical things to have in the letter?
I mean, highlighting the lack of answers for a lot of our issues at the latter half of the letter is important to have. And definitely highlighting some of the more technical big question marks such as um, water and general impact of the east side tailings. Um, again, at the latter half for some of those that may not, and and I trust you all to kind of come up with what makes sense to put forward and what makes sense to put ladder that. Yeah.
And then remind me again, especially because I know you felt some of your last questions were not adequately answered. Um, can you summarize that for me?
Yeah, I think specifically centered around the idea of remediation of the project. I don't think there's sufficient evidence to prove that they are actually fully remediating that area. There's no environmental study, there's no impact study, there's no, 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 that to show and indicate that actual remediation is happening in that area. And just saying that, well, the APA knows it's a problem, doesn't really mean that it's their solution is the proper one. So I don't, I I they didn't present enough evidence to me to feel comfortable with the idea that 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 their process is actual mediation of the east side of town and the teams they're working with.
Yeah.
And I trust you to put that in an elegant way.
Trust is mighty. Uh, Cisco. Nothing done. Okay. Do you ten?
Um, did we, sorry, I missed the wildfire, wild wildfire, wildfire. And um remediation.
I'm not gonna put that in the letter.
But Dana, I know you've been taking notes. I just want to repeat it to make sure I got it. Start out with the technical issues. One, water, two, wildfire, three, ongoing exposure from waste art file movement, which could be from dust or ongoing surface water drainage, which we guys are doing. And then the second major category of the letter would be community impact, truck traffic.
All emotional.
It's not remediation and the impact to recreation.
Isn't it a big deal if there's no environmental impact study?
Well, it's interesting because I know, like, obviously, there's been a lot of EPA tension up there. I'm wondering about if we can ask them down at the mill personally.
Well, you pointed out, it's already a brownfield and the mill has already been permitted in the past for other industrial processing operations. So really this permit is just a change in technique.
Like, this plantation isn't.
Same as cyanide bleach.
Yeah, it definitely isn't. Neither is it very useful. Steve, can you um? Since we're not, can can I take your comments? We have like two more things to do in our agenda and then we'll do public comment at the end.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yes, and then I think what I would do is preserve um, I really like the second paragraph here, talking about water quality, talking about like, look at what the Arkansas River has been through in the past. We worked really hard to get it to where it is today. Let's not mess that up. I love the hard one progress thing.
I personally appreciate the paragraph as well, and I would like that to stay.
Yep.
I don't like the paragraph.
You like all the paragraphs, don't you?
I told you. Her eloquence is like formidable. Yeah, and I do, and and I know Rebecca and I have talked about the just the concept of sense of place and I um, that's really been appealing to me and the undercurrent of my thought process over the last several days.
Yeah.
Um.
So Dana, did you want to leave something open at the end that, you know, it's an objection letter clearly, but leave some window for further discussion, negotiation, this is what we understand ends up today, that kind of thing?
I I do like, I mean, because really this is based on our current understanding and none of us with possibly the exception of Rebecca has a solid foundation in.
That's implied.
That we are.
No, just this, this is based on our current knowledge. We don't need to broadcast that.
Yeah. Well, and I like, I mean, I like the respectfully urging and please prioritize as we do, you know? Um, even though I think like that is that last sentence about prioritizing as we do the long term wellbeing of our environment and community over short term economic interests is something that you could draw, some of the technical stuff that they consider in. Yeah, yeah, no, I I I think really, I think really just adding the upfront technical stuff and I and I would also like to change this to like, we are writing.
Yeah.
You know, as
Yes.
the members, as members of the city council of Red Hill.
Should we send you an electronic signature?
That's a good question.
You can, she can, you can probably sign that this is signed for the apples of city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we can make a motion. Okay.
I mean, I think we should have. I think we should have all our names.
We can list out all the names of the council members in the vine in the may.
With yours, with your all's permission.
The members of city council that are here to vote on this and voted yes, right?
Right, so we, right. And that's why we say like, you know, we are writing as members of, not as the city council as a whole.
Yeah, yeah.
That was a very appropriate refusal.
Yeah.
I can both be working that.
I did nothing.
I I would like to also note that um at some point, though I don't think this unless they recuse and then again, then their application. Um, there is a Senate bill that says some decent momentum that does surround um, specifically this type of work um, uh, in environmental issues to have more collaboration and conversation between departments. So it's not just one department viewing it for one reason. So a lot of our concerns um that we have would literally be if that Senate bill were to have passed last year, for example. I mean, yeah, that would have been a lot more appropriate. So I don't. That's also something to think about long term, that that could potentially happen this year. I can get you all the numbers.
That's really.
This is state, yes, this is a state Senate bill. I can get you the number. It's another future phone.
Further discussion on this?
A point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, the public comment at the beginning and end of uh the meeting is providing is not on the agenda. Right. Um, is there a space for public comment on these items that are on the agenda?
Yes, and weirdly, it's it's my discretion. Um, and so I think, you know, that's for instance, one of the re, and I thought one of the reasons like I did not want to have CJK Millings' presentation turn into a back and forth, and that's why I was trying to separate like get everybody's public comment, hear the mill's presentation, you know, take a little break, have this discussion. And because like I said, we really only have two more action items and they are, they seem like they are going to be stop, very short, um, or at least straightforward. My feeling is is like because this meeting is so confined that putting public comment on the end is is still, it's still close enough and we're, you know.
Take a lot of the comment who's actually already got.
Well, let's do this. I think is it, well, Cisco's point is is well taken and we don't have a ton of public. Would anyone in the, in, yes?
Would anyone is kind of.
Because to uh give these comments after, so it was on the A, give these comments at the end of the meeting doesn't uh favorably contribute then. Um, I think the biggest and the strongest point here, and I can't remember if Cisco or Christian made this, but there was one of them made a comment about similar extractions about how uh they were negative in some other states. And I think we should ask for a study of these other extraction places that would be fairly comprehensive, not just have, you know, two or three, but uh a wide spectrum of them and focus on what were the negative aspects as far as the land what was left. And and that rolls into my first point here was the evaluation of soil left after, I think this was Cisco's point, I mean, uh, Christian's point, what's the soil gonna be like there when they take that stuff off there? It's gonna be all that other stuff percolated into that soil. Once they get the good stuff out of there, then what's left there? Is that, can we recreate on that or does that need to be remediated? So they're not remediating this, they're just extracting. And I think that's a second strong point that should be in your letter. Um, dust from the truck simply tarp will not be as significant town polluter over time. I think it will be because they're not sealing these trucks hermetically. It's kind of a thing that sits on top of there and gets quite a bit of it, but it's still going out the sides and stuff. And how long are they doing it? This is a four year program or a ten year program or something like that? That's gonna, all that's gonna be going on the side of the road and then, you know, it's gonna be traveling around town. That's a third strong point. This transport of water trucks through the community, this is a harder thing. Um, this will impact the community safety and tourism. The strength in the pond integrity, that really needs to be done. The the best pond integrity would be to have some kind of uh metal things that can't rip or tear like this plastic or rubber they're gonna use. That really needs to be a push point. Um, then from working at Climax, um, I, the line would come from the south and go up the climax and then the trucks will return that way. So there's gonna be a significant safety issue of these lime trucks turning into that property on that. So there's gonna have to be some type of adjustment made for the lime trucks to get off the road without causing any kind of uh, you know, especially with the high speed traffic there. Yeah, I, and then the the last issue for me that that was a strong one was the security of the the uh cyanide storage. So we live in a time now when we have terrorists that are gonna be making all kinds of statements and I would like to see an extremely strong uh security arrangement for the cyanide storage that somebody can't just drive a stolen truck through a couple of gates and into a door and then, you know, load this stuff on another truck and transport someplace where they're gonna dump it in somebody's water supply. So um, the cyanide storage thing has to be, you know, really tightened up. Okay, so thank you for listening.
Very interesting last point, and I want to thank you, Cisco. I think I think your point um in this particular setting is incredibly important. Elaine. You hand is up.
Just a couple of comments that have come to mind. If you recall, the second thought, the first thought we spoke, and I don't mean his name. He opened with and this town is historically a mining town. But if you want to do, you know, you need to make the decision, is it gonna be a mining town continually? Or is it gonna be more for recreation and tourist and that sort of a thrust? But but the point would be that if if they're allowed to do what they plan to do, it could jeopardize. I mean, even he obviously recognizes that that could jeopardize some of the recreational opportunities that could happen up there. Yeah, the dust thing, I'm thinking about the dust that's that is gonna be produced when they're taking their bulldozers and dumping it into the trucks. And it's just gonna go up in the air and it's all gonna flow down into and wherever the prevailing winds are gonna be. And so it's not just like a driving the truck, it's when they're loading the truck and when they're unloading the truck, it's gonna be, there's gonna be dust coming off of that dumping process there. I think dust is gonna be a huge factor. And um uh, and my last comment is it's more a question of the water issue, if they are allowed to drill on their property, and I guess they have a huge area that they that they own, I don't know how many acres they own. And and they need that much water. Um, wouldn't they be draining whatever groundwater is in the area? It's not gonna just be from right down there. It's gonna be drawing water from from all directions. And and that would seriously affect people who who live in that area. I mean, it could drain their, if their wells are not deep enough, they might end up dropped. So my concern is especially for those of you, but for all of us. So um, thank you very much for your consideration.
Very quickly online, since I've opened this up to public comment on city council's letter, wait. I can't, who's waving? Okay, I'm sorry, there's a glare on the screen. Mr. Benson.
Yeah, I have uh nine or ten quick comments. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so first, I I really appreciate the city council taking the time to really consider this. Number two is if you don't submit a letter, you're done. You have no opportunity to respond later on in the DRMS decision-making process. So I think it's imperative that you support, you you submit a letter of some sort. Number three, there's been a a lot of comments about newcomers from California coming in and and uh complaining about mining in in this issue in on our, especially on our uh our blog. And I just want to say, I've been here since nineteen ninety eight or ninety nine. I'm the president of the CC4LC. And I've been the past president of the Boom Days Committee, I've been the past president of the Land's Club here. I'm the, I I worked as uh the stage manager, sound guy at the Tibor Opera House when the Blanz owned it. I work there now as the as the uh as as a as a sound engineer. And so I have, I have a a deep connection to the community. Having said that, when CJK came in and and uh wanted a permit to process the slag uh at Dietrichson's basically, and the Union Pacific property that they bought, that was a restore, remove, rest recycle and restore project. And we we fully agreed with that process in CC4LC. The mill project is a relocate, reprocess and repile project. They, I I'm sorry, but they they commingle those two things to confuse you as to what they're actually doing. The 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 point is, is they're going to process five hundred thousand tons of uh mine waste, not tailings necessarily, but mine waste, which has a low, low ore grade. And they are hoping by next statements to me at the open house, which I believe may have been recorded by somebody else, but the the statement is, is they're hoping for five grams of gold per ton. They're hoping to process forty, four hundred tons a day. That equates to at two thousand dollars a ounce processing what is it? Thirty one grams of grams of gold per ton, which equates to about sixty four ounces per day, which is a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars of revenue per day. The the issue for me is they are going to, if they make their numbers, they are going to remove Lake County resources, Lake County resources of gold and silver amounting to in excess of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars uh a day. And they are going to receive, give to us a very high-risk pile of mine waste that does in fact include many heavy metals that is adjacent to the Leadville Sanitation District finishing pond that is operating under a cease and desist order from the state because of their mercury levels. This, this pile contains mercury. If any of that mercury gets into those, that
It's been over three minutes.
I'm sorry, I have a whole bunch of other stuff. But thank you for your time. I just want you to understand that you need to submit a letter.
Yes, we do understand that. All right. Any other public comment about this specific letter? Okay, oh is is Ruth, do you wanna say something? You're just, you guys just waving?
That's Jim's hand waving. I'm just listening carefully.
Oh, I just wanted to say Georgia's comments are right on the mark. Um but I really appreciated the questioning that you went through uh during the presentation. Your your focus on this issue is really commendable, and I hope all the constituents that voted for you or didn't vote for you will now really vote for you because you've done a Yomich's job in protecting our community. So thank you so much.
That's a hundred percent. I did owe that a hundred percent. You guys did a great job.
Very much. Okay, so if you think of marching orders, Ruth, I'll speak with you after the meeting about the letters. Let's move on. Resolution twenty? I thought it was just a discussion.
No, there is a proposed motion here.
Thank you for not setting me fall astray. All right. All right, so we have had a really robust discussion uh on this, and I really appreciate everyone's input. Because we are gonna take some action, did somebody make a motion?
I got you. Luna left news to approve uh the mayor sending a letter um with modifications made at this meeting on the behalf of city council to the Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety regarding the pending CJK milling permit with the Colorado Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety as indicated in this meeting. That's it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thomas. Mayor Proten Tharp. Councilmember Luna Lee. Mayor. And Councilmember Edwards.
Well, he's he's refused, yeah. And thank you.
Member Best.
Yes.
He saved the best for last.
All present. That was terrible.
Yeah, it's actually pretty good for night, I was
It's, I just want, thank you, Christian, for taking us back into the procedure. I'm clearly ailing without my mount to do.
I was excited to make the
Can we call down Councilmember Edwards?
I have to check on my car, if that's okay, cuz my phone keeps saying Can I just run real quick?
Three-minute recess. We're kinda going off the rails here. What was it? So we had what? We had we had time flies when you're having super fun? And then what? What did you say, Lori? Cause we, I earlier wrote down.
You don't save the hell for us?
Mayor Proten.
Well, I mean, at certain point, we're over the hill.
Not yet. Not yet.
I I I will come up with one for Thomas Tharp and Edwards before the
I don't know if you caught Mayor Proten Tharp's comment about time flies when you're having super fun? See, this is I knew that would be a rousing discussion. That would be amazing. It depends how fast I go through the, through the the second reading, Stan.
Uh the doors weren't open, but the window was wide open.
Did you intend that?
Uh, no. I mean, I forgot to close it while.
Would that include all of our Yeah, but what about there? Cause I thought there, like the presentation itself, like they get to talk for about ten minutes, and they went a little over, but it was important stuff that needed
Their presentation was about How much?
Thirty. I didn't feel that one. I didn't, I I have mixed feelings about limiting presentations, just because especially this issue. I'm not sure.
I think it is up to your discretion.
What, the timeline?
Yes, so I was communicating through Melissa Kendrick. And so I don't know how they thought that they had to appear by Zoom, but I sent the Zoom link, so maybe there was a presumption that they can only appear by Zoom, but anyway, I think made a mistake and told them I was fifteen minutes, but still, a lot of the back and forth.
And I think, I mean, something as controversial as this, I'm I'm not sure. Cause I don't think, I, when I was talking, when I told them ten, I was like, we didn't really limit concerned citizens. I just let them roll. Their presentation, so.
Yeah, that was weird, cuz Melissa comes to every year. So it would be unusual to
Yeah, I don't know. I obviously miscommunication because it somehow got conveyed to them.
I feel like everything that needed to be said got to be said. I'm grateful for that. Okay, welcome back, Councilmember Edwards. We're gonna move on to resolution number twenty-three. This is a resolution approving our letter of agreement with KRW Associates, excuse me, to uh uh use them in a police chief search.
Okay, Ms. Vehill and I will handle this team this up, but essentially, we're asking approval of a letter of agreement uh in accordance with our procurement policy. We obtained three quotes and having evaluated all three of them, both of us felt as though not only was KRW uh more economical, but we mentioned in the prior meetings that they're more tailored to uh police chief search. They are former staff and former police chiefs and have a level of experience that uh Gov HR in Columbia did not. And we felt that they definitely understood the Colorado market and and potentially candidates who are out there much better than the other companies. So uh you all need to approve this contract because I only have signing authority up to fifteen thousand dollars so that it exceeds that. Uh but just wanted to let you know, we comply with our procurement policy. And as you know, is there anything else you wanted to add about our evaluation of the different candidates?
Um, not necessarily, but in speaking with each company on the phone, they were the most uh involved in conversation from the get-go. Um and certainly have a network within um pleasing in Colorado. The other um companies didn't necessarily have. So being um all former police chiefs to some extent themselves, um they have a network and they fill police chief positions very often. So they have a whole pool of candidates that maybe came very close but weren't necessarily selected, but that doesn't mean they were, can't be perfect for us. So they just have a a network that the other companies didn't already have at their disposal.
And we did, uh actually, Ms. Vehill did check references and they did, I think it was in the packet, they did uh help place a police chief in me.
I contacted the lead administrator of the town with me. Um and they have had their police chief who they're extremely happy with for five years now. Uh and she could not recommend KRW or nothing, her words.
I'm kinda tweaked by the comments of, from Columbia.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, well, now we're really not gonna hire you.
Well, here, here's the, and I included that on purpose, and I I knew it was, you know, um it was very blunt, but I think that one of it is uh well taken that we our previous um salary range for that position is not adequate. And uh we have I think salary in the budget for about a hundred and five thousand. And we're gonna ask for KRW's advice as if that is going to get us in the ballpark or not. So we are holding back for their advice on what they feel is inadequate salary in order to get someone to, uh as the Columbia gentleman pointed out, probably to relocate, so. I put it in there knowing it was, it was blunt, but I think it's
My conversation with him was much, uh he was being very honest, which I did appreciate. And the fact that he said um he's been doing executive searches for a while and being um our, our community with cost availability of housing, that we would need to consider that before spending money on recruiting efforts because we'd be conflicted with ourselves, spending twenty-five thousand dollars on recruiting agency, but no standing ground for a police chief. Um with surrounding areas paying so much more. If they're relocating anyways, why come here? And they could go to Eagle, uh which is not far and very similar, sparse proximity to large cities and stuff like that. So just a consideration that he was very blunt about, but not necessarily wrong for us to just reconsider what position we stand in. KRW is uh who I definitely wanna turn to preferably for advice with their experience feeling position recently.
It just clear that you feel that our salary range is possible, or we haven't really heard back on that?
I haven't discussed salary with them. Um it was a very direct question that Columbia asked me from the first ten minutes of our phone call. Um KRW really went more into um our community, what do we highlight about Leadville, basically, like we're gonna help you to go place, the location. Uh and they really went into more of what they do and their background, so.
They're willing to contract with us for twenty-five thousand dollars, but we haven't even discussed a salary range yet.
Uh no, that was Columbia quoted as twenty-five thousand dollars.
Sorry, I turned my computer up.
Yeah, I mean, I think
But but we haven't had that conversation with KRW.
No, and I I would say that's getting into what we would pay them for. I mean, I I think there's gonna be information they provide about their backgrounds, experience, but I mean, we're, we're gonna pay them for advice, and that's the whole point of hiring them is, I I mean, they might probably give us a ballpark, but the analysis about what we're looking for and who we're trying to place and what we're willing, what we should be willing to pay is the conversation we're paying for. So I feel like
So we're, we're paying them for the information without necessarily paying them to find us a chief.
No, that is a hundred percent what their idea, their, uh yeah, I mean, their whole scope of work is
But if they come back, as soon as we're out of the check for nineteen thousand dollars, they come back and say, well, we can't find you a chief for less than a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which we can't budget for, then we
We have, we, there is some market research to know that a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is definitely not the number. Um so we have a better idea now that maybe wasn't done when the, the job description was created early last year. We have information now um based on market, a market study that we've done.
And we have budgeted more than the salary range that's listed here.
Yeah, so I think here's where we see the expertise of what we're hiring for. And I mean, uh my expertise is I also wanna avoid salary compression with our existing staff and where we hire. Cause then we run into a whole nother issue down the road. And so definitely, um we've uh police chiefing is definitely not necessarily my expertise. Um so it's all these things um that we need for, from the, from the get-go. Um and then they absolutely, they reach out, they do phone screens, they provide us
I know, I I understand the service that you're doing, the man to provide, I just but we're a little farther along in the process for what we're actually asking.
Yeah, no, I think we are. I think the, the issue is, is we have uh put in the budget, you know, salary of a hundred and five. We're probably gonna need to do more than that. The question is, how much more is, is? So essentially, what we're looking for them to tell us is if you start at a hundred and five, you're gonna start, that's, that's too low. Some people just assume they're gonna be hired in at the bottom and they're not interested in that. We need some guidance. And then we also know that, you know, beyond, you know, a hundred and forty-five is way too much. You know, so we, we have some parameters, but we need your expertise to say, look, community of your size, you know, two months ago hired for this, so this is your ballpark. That's the expertise. We, we know what
And that's not what we're paying them nineteen thousand dollars for, right? You know, like, they have their pool of candidates and the sites where they advertise on, that they will come up with X number of applicants and help us narrow down and and we kinda hold our hands all the way through final interviews, which, you know, they're just doing the lion's share of the, of the reaching out and calling candidates that they feel would be a good fit.
Understood, thank you.
I I got a comment or a question, I guess. And I can appreciate why we're interested in, in coming up with a recruiting firm. I'm a little bit conflicted because we don't have an IHE yet, and I think that is going to impact the scope of work for any eventual police chief that's hired. Uh and I'm sure that KRW would include that in their discussions, but it just I'm a little bit conflicted about that. Uh our police chief will not necessarily have the same autonomous role that a police chief in another community might have, but wasn't entered into an IHE with the county sheriff.
Not at all. Uh so uh the IGA with the sheriff's office would just be a contract for services that we don't currently have the person power to cover. So again, going back to what we'd be asking for is shift coverage and evidence room help. So the police chief coming in has the police department, has the ability to hire fire, has the ability to grow the agency. We talked about where the police department is, and then it, you know, the intent is to grow the police department over time. But I think this is an opportunity for someone to come in and build their own department, where we wouldn't have to contract with the sheriff's department for coverage or other services. So if you remember uh that, you know, when Chief Chaddis, you know, Chief Chaddis was here, he made some recommendations about growth, long-term, down road, such as hiring a detective and send this hiring, you know, part-time evidence technician. So the idea would be, the chief would get to come in and look at what, what are the current needs, obviously hiring police officers priority, but what is, what is the one-year, two-year, five-year, ten-year plan for the department? And build towards that where, you know, instead of coming in and inheriting um a department, it's an opportunity to, to build something. And it certainly had other folks who come in, if you look at, you know, planning, coming in and building a department from, from scratch, that's definitely possible.
But to your point, I think, you know, an important piece that, you know, that we'd be looking for is an individual who is willing, interested and capable of forming a close relationship with the sheriff's department and being Willing, interested and capable of forming a close relationship with the sheriff's department and being and being a partner. Much as, um, Chief Chavez was, you know, he cultivated that relationship.
Which I think would be great, and some some part of me is also wondering if there's an opportunity at this point in time. To achieve some efficiencies between police department and sheriff's department, so we're not duplicating. Services in such a small community, like maybe there are some things the sheriff does, police chief doesn't do and vice versa.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about, so the statutory responsibility of the sheriff's office, it's it's actually not a department, it's not a department of the county, it's its own entity. If you look at some municipalities, um, the sheriff's office only handles the jails and the warrants. So if you look at the city and county of Denver, city and county of Denver Police Department, the police department handles all law 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 enforcement calls. That's their jurisdiction. Then again, that's a much, much, much bigger jurisdiction, but that's their division of labor is the sheriff's office. Handles the jails and warrants and and so.
I'm just wondering if we have buttoned down the division of labor between sheriff's department and police department. Because I think that could impact. The role of the police chief and who might be interested in taking on that position.
So I think it's more, I don't I don't think it's, I I don't think that is entirely possible because. What the ideal would be is. At least two law enforcement officers on duty at all times.
Well, I get that part, and I'm not talking about just simple coverage. I think that's absolutely key.
But that's the that's the majority of of your labor, and I think that's the other issue too, whether contracting for the evidence, because I don't think we have enough. Work to justify many even what somebody would consider as a part-time job for evidence. So working together on some of those things, I think, uh, the other ways that we can, uh, you know, partner in or some administration functions. But I think if you're, if you're thinking about the biggest core of labor is call response. And while the county has primary jurisdiction for a call in the county, we would go as backup, so if there's a larger incident. So I think that the M O U that we currently have in place covers that. So that M O U basically is, here's what we will do to support each other as far as, um, incident response. And then, you know, we we left it, neither agency had been billing each other up to this point because. For many years, police covered sheriffs, now sheriffs covering more police, but we felt like. We're just kind of kind of see how it shakes out. Now we've seen that perhaps we're asking more of the sheriff's office, so we're going to pay them for that service. But, you know, I I think the division of labor. I don't, uh, other than calls, I don't see us overlapping a ton on what we do.
And I think buttoning down roles. Too prematurely would limits the flexibility and and the attractiveness of coming in to run a department. That is, that is buttoned down, that, you know, like, I I like the. I like the idea of being like, you know, like, this is an apartment that needs to grow, like, how would you like to grow it?
I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I also wanna point out, uh, kind of to Joey's earlier point as to where we're at in the process. I don't. I can only speak for myself, so I have had concerns as to where we're at in the process in terms of our long-term planning as a city council for. The police department, uh, regarded to being able to provide that safety. Um, and I. I struggle with the idea of spending more money to hire someone. And then also giving them most of a raise, um, on that position, which inadvertently might lead to having to give other officers a raise too. As well, um, if we're going to be, um, getting applicants from outside of our community, which seems to be where we're heading. That we're just. We're spending more and more money and more and more money on. It, and I don't feel necessarily comfortable with that idea. And just throwing a police chief there without having the general idea of a budget behind me. To understand like next year, what it is that we're going to actually budget for and if it's gonna fit in that. Cause I would hate to put someone in a situation, oh, yeah, let's build your own department, and then next year us being like, we weren't able to recruit people we needed. Sheriff's did. Now all of a sudden, we have two people coverage and we only have four employees in the police department. Instead of a seven department, now we're going to a four or five. I I don't have a good feeling of our long-term goal. And we're spending a lot of money to hire someone to kind of develop that with us, and it just seems uncomfortable for me to do that.
Let me, so, I mean. First of all, we we have tried widely advertising on our own.
Right.
And that's been unsuccessful.
Right.
We have, as a council, agreed to the importance of preserving a police department and not merging.
Yes, I would agree with that.
We. Have a, you know, a side project of trying to come to an agreement with the sheriff to provide. Coverage in our low periods. But if we wanna preserve this police department, you know, like, we need a police chief. And our efforts so far have not been successful. You know, this is a, this is a tested, approved of group. That even Chief Chavez spoke highly of when we reached out to him. And I think that, you know, like, this is the next step, like, the easy stuff didn't work. The next step is to get people who have the connections, who have a working pool of candidates. Um, and who and who have the time to do the exhaustive search and filter. For our particular community that then, you know, H R and city admin can like look at the. Pool and say, let's talk to them more. You know, we're giving, like. What wasn't working for finding a police chief, um, and really what we're doing is prolonging the the. Prolonging the lack of structure in our police departments.
Yeah, I I don't disagree. I guess there's just a fundamental disagreement in the sense of. That for me and understanding that. I mean, it is what it is, council feels comfortable going forward. I don't see, I would say no, even though I have fundamental disagreement.
I think this makes good sense to hire somebody to. Find a chief, what we've been doing obviously is is not very effective. I would encourage council, I haven't encouraged staff, not to slow down the momentum of coming up with an I G A agreement. I would not want this to deter from coming up with an agreement for May when we do set short coverage, so.
And and I think I said that the the main, this isn't either war, we've been in a parallel process. For a while on on, you know. Hiring a number of police officers that has been put in the budget. We we put in the budget and we discussed the budget about how many officers we put in the budget. We talked about a police chief. You know, we didn't pursue detective this time, but that's something that Chief, in our Chief Chavez recommended, so, you know, we're looking at things, uh. Basically, we're trying to do what we've already budgeted to do. Now, are we gonna end up hiring somebody for exactly what we put in the budget? For a police chief? We don't know, uh, but we're in the ballpark. Uh, we're not at sixty to ninety where we were previously, uh, but.
But we we were way out of bed room with Chief Chavez, so.
Yep.
Um, this this would be sending us some money if we find somebody in this range, um. Great with this, that what we're doing isn't working, so the next step would be to do exactly what you guys are recommending. Once again, recommending to council, recommending to staff, that we don't slow down the momentum of I G A with this process.
I I see those as two separate, two separate issues, because hiring a police chief is not gonna obviate the need for. The sheriff's assistance with coverage.
And that's exactly my point, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, is this a contingency search firm where we pay upon successful? Placement of the candidate, or is it upfront cost?
Um, and not a contingency search firm, um, they did, however, uh, in the event. That we just do not get any applicants, worst-case scenario. They have a lot of experience in, um, negotiating I G As and so. In my initial conversation, it started from, um, with him, like, worst-case scenario, after thirty days, maybe we decide. We need to repost it for another thirty days. Um, we still don't get any candidates. They will use their expertise, then they'll help us as a city. Negotiate an I G A with the sheriff's department. It's that experience that they have doing. I didn't really feel I wanted to, you know, really dig into that, but they. So they've ensured some type of collusion, that they wouldn't leave us with absolutely nothing to grow from.
And the initial search for thirty days is nineteen thousand dollars. If it has to go for an additional thirty days, is that an additional nineteen thousand dollars?
No, if you look at their timeline, it's a, it's a longer timer than thirty days.
I thought so, I was just verifying what what.
Yeah, if if there, I don't know, the posting is just up for ninety days or thirty days and that's what the, but their their process is, you know. From posting through, you know, all the meetings and accountable evaluations and interview panels and everything else. Will take longer than thirty days.
And their proposal seemed pretty aggressive to me, like, I don't, I did not get the feeling that they would like, we're gonna put up these ads and just sort of. And we'll just wait, you know, like, six months later, we'll get back to it, like, they seemed on it with a proposed, like, an ex- anticipated timeline. And it seemed very aggressive to me, like, they seemed very hands-on.
Yep.
And once again, just to beat that their force, we're not waiting sixty days to. To see if we find a chief before we continue negotiating an I G A, which is currently in process, correct?
Separate issues.
Yeah, completely separate process of processes of this.
I I would certainly hope that we're not still looking at trying to negotiate an I G A with the sheriff's office for coverage in sixty days from now. I'd really love to see it.
Yeah, no.
Making progress, we agree.
The ball is in their court.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think some of that depends on he, on their response to the the information that we put in from the executive session of how we wanted. To proceed.
Oh, uh, is this money coming from the P D budget, the nineteen thousand?
Uh, no, it probably comes from professional services other.
Okay, and is that? Staying within the realm of our budget, is it a made?
Uh, yeah, I mean, here's the thing on the professional services other, it, um. We're looking at a few other professional services throughout this year that we're we're trying to bring on board, so. Um, I think it should, it should be, uh, I have to double check what exactly, I think we have twenty or thirty thousand dollars in professional services.
Yeah, I need to, I need, I'm just trying to pull that up right now.
Four, also forty-four, so I think.
Oh, good. So then when I come to you next meeting and say, here's how much I'd like to spend on a strategic plan, it'll still be inside of me.
But that money's being used for the the community center project manager too, isn't it?
No, 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 we put that money in the, um, did we put in professional services other, I think?
I have to go back a little bit.
I'll get back to you, I won't review some of these right now, but.
Okay.
I think my last comment is, I I appreciate why we need a a recruiter, although a yes for it. But I would like to preserve space for ongoing discussion between police department, sheriff's department and city council. To try to achieve some efficiencies between the two departments.
I really think that's a discussion for between police chief and sheriffs. I don't actually know very much about efficiency and law enforcement.
I don't, I don't either. I just hate to get into a situation where if the police chief builds. A city fiefdom and the sheriff has the county fiefdom and never the twin show.
I didn't even know we had a detective until tonight.
Yeah.
I really have, that we can choose, um, on panels for the finalists. Um, we have city council, um, us, we can certainly, it's up to our discretion, but. Uh, I would suggest Sheriff Speckman be on a panel. We also have, um. So that would be my, uh, input for future, uh, relationships there. Um, and then again, the reception that they, uh, help organize for any community, we open it to the community. So any stakeholders and community members interested in meeting the finalists, we will have, um, a reception that they will help us host. Um, so it's very transparent and really involves everyone that should be concerned.
I was gonna mention, uh, the town of Eagle is actually having a town hall meeting this Thursday to, uh, vet their finalist candidates. And I'm gonna go and see how they run it, so.
Point on that, you mentioned Eagle a couple of times. Do we know, I know it's a very different sized community, but do we know what kind of a salary range? They're offering for their chief search?
One more question I have is, um. Uh, what, how can we as council inform the qualities that we communicate to K R W and what we're searching for? Um, and I I trust that you all have thought it through, but for example, like. Readiness to coll- to collaborate with the sheriff's department and, um, build relationships with our community serving organization, stuff like that. Is that in the job description and will they, can they help?
Yeah, they actually in their project scope, they mentioned a couple of times, um, meeting a person with leadership. Um, and compile input information relative to the scaled ability to attribute qualifications and educational requirements. Um, and this includes, you know, these stakeholders, um, they've mentioned it a couple of times, so. Um, I would expect that they have, uh, specific questions that they know to ask us. Um, sometimes we don't know what questions to answer, uh, necessarily, so we don't know what questions to ask. And I hope that they can ask us these questions to really narrow down all of these characteristics, attributes, the things we know that. That's not limited for our chief in the past, the things that maybe did work, um, from what I hear, in terms of Chief Chavez was. Um, doing a pretty good job, so we have an idea of qualities, um. And education and experience and certifications, things like that. Um, and then again, I would suggest, uh, Sheriff Speckman have good input, um, for our local community expertise. Um, so they certainly have the experience to help us, guide us towards both the answers.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Other comments, questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Thomas most approve, resolution twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. The resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville, Colorado approving a letter of agreement with K R W associates. And authorizing the city administrator to sign the agreement.
Edward Stevens.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council member Best.
Yes.
Mayor Green.
Yes.
Uh, council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Lina Lee Allen.
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Potam Tharman.
Yes.
And council member Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to our last action item, which is the second reading of ordinance number one. And as this is in the second reading, this is a public hearing. All right, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Leadville. Amending chapter five point oh four of title five of the Leadville municipal code, regulating the business of guiding snowmobiles. And off-highway vehicles in the city. Um, just as a note, city council did adopt this ordinance on first reading on March fifth, twenty twenty-four with minor changes. Adding ATV to the wording. Because this is the second and final reading of the ordinance, uh, city council will do these following steps. First. I will ask that the city staff give any presentation or provide any information that they have about the ordinance. City council will have the chance to ask questions of staff and have discussions with staff during the presentation. Next, I will invite the public to provide any comments on the ordinances that they would like city council to consider. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on the ordinance may speak one at a time, and each person will have no more than three minutes to comment. Finally, council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. Questions on that procedure? We've been through, all right, let's go to staff presentation. We've been through, before, alright, let's go to staff presentation.
So the only uh change from first reading to second reading was the addition of ATVs.
Moving forward, are there any members of the public? Would, wait, let me pause, does anyone have any questions?
Are you sure?
Yeah.
All terrain vehicle.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who would like to uh comment on this ordinance, please?
Um, th- there's no punitive uh uh provision for people that violate the the. You think, you know, maybe there should be a consideration about some kind of. Punitive thing if they are. They violate these provisions here.
Thank you. Well, I don't see anybody else on comment except ourselves and our city attorney. Um, I I would say that this, because this is a business licensing ordinance, it really doesn't. Involve, it it only, like punitive stuff would be through, do you get your business license the next year or not? It's not through regulation of. The actions of individuals. Um, okay, um. Discussion? Has everybody had a chance to read through this, this new and improved ordinance? I'm really happy with it. Alright then.
Edwards moves to adopt ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-four.
I think I need to close the public input portion of the public hearing. Do you need a motion? Yes, I do.
Bart moves to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Um, the second.
All in favor? Okay. Other discussion? I don't see, nailed it. Okay, uh, council member Edwards, he had started a a motion for a vote.
Alright, Edward smooths to adopt ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-four, amending chapter five point oh four of title five. Level municipal code, regulating the business of guiding snowmobiles, off-highway vehicles and all training vehicles. In the city of Leadville on second read.
Roll call please.
Council member Edwards.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Green.
Yes.
Council member Lunalea.
Yes.
Council member Best.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Potam.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes. Alright, fantastic, thank you all so much. Uh, let's move on to public comments. Please.
I'm sorry that we have another three minutes here, but. Um, we're at the twelve, uh. Um, I found out that uh we cannot, the city or county can't tax retail. I mean, uh, sales of properties because of, um. Uh, the provisions, I can't hear the term now right now. But. Um, it's possible that we can tax the short-term rentals, like I thought asked in in the past. And with the idea that we would use this money to buy housing for our chief of police. And uh other figures in that, that makes it two burdensome for them to live here. So, I wish you would consider as a job, um. Whatever you call it, uh. To uh provide housing for our chief of police. Um, if we had that, then that would save them. Twenty-four to thirty thousand dollars in rent a year. Plus, if we pay the utilities, it would be even more. And that would draw some applicants, I think, just on that thing. Living here is it's a crushing expense, so. Uh, I'm hoping we could. Think about that a little more and maybe buy a building somewhere and say, this is where the chief of police gets to live. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Okay, everybody buy a lottery ticket so we can consider that. Um, mayor's report, okay, I I definitely, y- you know, I don't know how many of you were in town. When the Tabor Opera House decided to shed a few bricks. Um, but I was, I just really want to express a lot of gratitude to both. The city and the county services that responded so promptly and had that area blocked off. And the fire department got right up there and. Tested it out and decided, you know, the best thing was to block this up for a while. The the. The immensely rapid response that Sarah Day and her team had to um securing a plan. For getting this investigated, evaluated and uh and safely. Secured so that we can move forward with the, they haven't even selected the. The contractors for doing the 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 rehabilitation of that front face yet. And they were able in part to move so quickly, A, they got immediate response from Dola who said. We will find a way to make this work, but then some incredibly generous members in the community stepped forward and just. And just funded it, so we didn't even have to go through these emergency.
Member.
Member, yeah, ma- was a couple members.
One, one contribution.
One couple.
Very generous, very.
Really like cut downs, uh even though the state was incredibly willing to. Work with Sarah and her team and have a rapid response, like this money. Alright, I I'm just gonna grant myself more time. Anyway, I, it was just, it was a really incredible moment of everyone working together so quickly and the. They've come to such a happy resolution and I got a crash course in directing traffic, so it was super fun. Um, the other thing is, I got, uh, I attended the Cloud City Mountain Sports, uh, the end of their season banquet. This is the group in town that provides um lessons and competitions for kids in alpine skiing and mountain biking and Nordic skiing and. Um, and snowboarding and this tiny group has grown so much. They serve kids ages four to eighteen in our community, which is huge, it's a huge sector. Of uh of our up and coming kids. They were able to provide scholarships to attend. Um, these services for every family who asked. And they got there by their fundraising activities, like they're just an incredible group. Um, and it's, it's, it's great, like they have, they brought up every single group from the tiniest skiers who are like this big. You know, up to kids who are graduating for college and some of them are going on to. To take those skills with them to compete in college. So anyway, it was amazing compared to. Uh, several years ago when I would show up with my kids to the end of the season nor, you know, banquet and it was just sort of chaos and a bunch of kids running around and. It is like this highly boiled machine now that is really serving our kids incredibly well. And that's, that's what I got. Counsel?
Make my good, um. Recently, I uh showed interest to read, I'm a column with the Chieftain Housing Trust to be a member of the board. Um, of the Chieftain Housing Trust, um, and I was eventually elected to be on that board as a representative for. Lake County Governance, uh, which we have, I think, one slot for, and I'm filling currently. Um. As such, I have a report uh from that meeting, it's some good news. Um, it seems like the third week of June, we should be seeing the units, the physical units arrive. Um, so that is currently what we're looking at in terms of timeline. So, third week of June, mark your calendars for the units.
Little flag, this is of excitement.
Yeah. Awesome.
Okay. Anything else from council? Public meetings planner? Do we have something next Tuesday? We do not have something next Tuesday, do we?
I think we should have a work session.
We, we have, for those who can make it, Laura is this Thursday at six. I know a couple of people have. Uh, have, um, said they need to be absent, uh, which is fine, thank you for communicating that in advance. It really helps us. Figure out who to focus on to make sure we have a quorum, um.
I also replied to the R S B.
No, I don't, nothing next Tuesday. I will say again, state of the community is April thirtieth at. Freight from five to seven PM, um. With our focus this year on hearing from groups around the county, uh, who are dealing with housing and childcare. I'm very excited about that. Alright.
It's this Thursday, right?
What?
The state of community.
Laura is this Thursday, it was incorrect in the paper. State of community is the thirtieth of April. It it was initially advertised for, I I'm not entirely sure why, but yeah, that. That was incorrect, please, please be at Laura instead.
And if you're on a board next Tuesday, come to the HPC meeting.
I got P and Z like the next day, so.
You said if we want to be bored next Tuesday?
I don't think it's what I said, but I might have, I'm pretty tired.
Me too, I apologize, I know I got a little unfocused there in the middle, next time I'll show up with my Mountain Dew and it'll go much better. Alright, it at nine fifty-four. Thank you all so much. Somehow I still managed to make it last till ten. Down under your feet. And I'm also been really enjoying this, this like Aurora Boy Alice stuff.
Yeah, what's going on there?
This is the longest we've been talking about, we're doing nine with machines.
No theories in retrograde.
That is good criticism, I will think that.
Um, actually, I'm gonna be on the road. Um, let me see.